Our good doctor already called us to work, so take over here to the Board of Health. Go.
Thank you.
Sorry. Would you please call the role? Sheriff Furlong?
Yeah.
Supervisor about?
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Yes.
Supervisor Shirk?
Here.
And?
Dr. Pintar.
Dr. Pintar? Thank you.
We have a quorum.
You got the mayor.
I'll get it right.
Thank you. So we have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of October 16th?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. Sorry, public. I ignored you. Is there a public comment that I am missing? Not yet. Okay. Thank you. We'll go on to possible approval of the minutes of October 16th, which I believe the Board has seen.
I move to approve the minutes of October 16th, 2014, as published.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you. And let's see. Oh, me. Okay. All right. Well, I will deliver my report. I've been fooling around as usual the past few months.
You what?
Fooling around. That's my job. It's in the description. I had it written in.
All right.
Okay. Well, a few things I've been doing. We have been working to streamline the process of hospital admission for adult mental health patients. Our hospitals has experienced some delays in getting folks admitted. Other hospitals in the region have had the same thing. Anyway, so we've had some discussions, and they're very open discussions. I think we're making some progress, but it does point out the need for more inpatient as well as outpatient mental health facilities, as well as our need to pool resources and personnel. So I just wanted to let people know that attention is being paid. There is going to be some legislation coming up, as I understand it, that is increasing funding for mental health beds in northern Nevada as well as southern Nevada. But again, I think as a community, we have to be aware that our needs for mental health services, especially outpatient mental health services, far exceed what our available resources are. I participated in the first meeting of the state Ebola task force. Did I say that last time? I can't remember. Ebola is not considered an imminent threat to Nevadans. The silver lining is that this topic helps us focus on overall preparedness, and it is nice to have all the agencies working together, especially if there was an outbreak of any major infectious disease.
Doc, on that one, wasn't there a news report out that said that Nevada was last in the country on Ebola preparedness?
There was, and...
Wasn't there a report out that Nevada was lacking in its Ebola preparedness?
That particular report, I can't remember who put it out, but they said that we were towards the end, and actually that was the impetus for this task force, as I believe.
Arizona did say that.
That can go off the record. Thank you. Let's see. Sexual assault response team, our SART team, we're continuing to explore the reestablishment of sexual assault exams in Carson City. We have a couple of offers for exam room space and are looking to find resources to organize staffing. I will be having some conversations with various folks in the community about both of those things, and our sexual assault response team continues to meet quite regularly. I'm going to go to the national conference next week, as I think the mayor said he'd go with me, yeah, to participate in our report on cross-jurisdictional sharing project that established environmental health services with Douglas County. I think, and I think the group agrees, that this progress has been a great success, and from what we hear feedback-wise, it will become a model for similar projects around the country. So we're kind of proud of that. And last but not least, Mr. Bonkowski, Mr. Shirk, Ms. Aker, and I have been meeting to review the program and the finances of the Health Department, and we hope to make some recommendations to the Board of Health at the next meeting as to the direction of public health efforts in our community. Questions or comments? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve that report from the Health Officer.
I move to approve, move to accept and approve the Health Officer's report.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in second has been made to approve that report. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We will go on to item B, which is the Director's Report. Ms. Nikki Aker.
Hello. Good afternoon. So first, I'm going to report for Human Services, and this graph here, it shows dollar amounts that were paid for developmental services, the developmental services program, that's in blue, the home waiver program, which is in red, and the county match, which is in, like, a greenish color, and that's for the last 17 months, from July 2013 to November 2014. And these programs are mandated by state statute. I'm just going to give you a real quick explanation of each program. The developmental services program covers eligible disabled children living at home or in a group home, and they receive targeted case management, clinical services, or respite care. If not, if these individuals are not on Medicaid, the individual is asked to apply, and if on Medicaid, then Carson City pays its share of that Medicaid bill. The average we have is about 13 children on this program. The county match is funded by taxes, and currently it's capped at eight cents. This includes the county's Medicaid portion, and it also pays for eligible seniors in long-term care facilities, and we average about 44 people in this program. Also, under the, let me back up. We currently have about 10 people in this program right now that may be the responsible, responsibility of other counties, and we're currently looking into that and working with Medicaid and NACO to get this corrected and expect to receive a credit. Another part of the county match is the home waiver program, and it's for seniors or disabled needing home care or living in an assisted living facility, and we average about 83 people in this program. Also in Human Services, we had a job fair in September 26, 2014. These are your results. So we had 45 employers that participated and 11 education or employment resources. There were 421 job seekers that attended, and 321 of those 421 were Carson City residents, so 76% were in Carson City. 64 were veterans. There were 315 jobs that were available, and 174 of those jobs were located in Carson City, which is about 55%. We send out a post-job survey, post-job fair survey, and have the employers and the educational employment resources respond back to us. To date, we've had 21 responses, and of those responses, there were 47 Carson City residents that were hired for Carson City positions. So, and our next job fair is Friday, February 27. For clinical services, we have a maternal-child health grant. It's funded from July 1st to June 30th for $53,000. This covers a half of an FTE, so a part-time position, and then another, it's a quarter part-time position. And I'm going to report on five of the goal areas within this grant, and the stats that I'm reporting are reflected from the first quarter of the fiscal year. So one goal is that children and youth receive coordinated, ongoing comprehensive care within a medical home. So progress to date, we have seen 28 children for well-child checks, which includes developmental hearing and vision screenings. 14 of those children were uninsured and received education and referral to either Medicaid or the access to healthcare network, and then 11 of those children were referred for subsequent evaluation due to findings outside of the normals. And to date, we, beginning November 1st, 2014, just talking about getting insurance for these people, we have onsite enrollment on Mondays, and that's a grant that we're collaborating with the state on. So they'll do Medicaid enrollment. Our other goal is community immunization rates meet or exceed the Healthy People 2020 objectives, and we've got staff that participate on the Board of Directors and subcommittees of Immunize Nevada, which is a statewide immunization coalition. We conducted a back-to-school social media campaign on Facebook and reached 7,847 Facebook pages in Carson City and Douglas County.
Nikki, I'm sorry. Can you tell us what Healthy People 2020 objectives is about?
That's a document that has been put out. It's looking, it's across the whole...
I can clarify a little bit. It's a CDC document that's produced every 10 years, and as Ms. Aker points out, it's a comprehensive, goal-oriented document. How do we want Americans to be healthy, in quite specific ways? Like, we'd like this amount of smoking, or, you know, zero, or, you know, things like that. So these objectives, as you can imagine, it's a long document, but it's kind of a guiding principle for public health, and, you know, for health in general. Where are we headed in our, in our efforts to improve people's health?
And you'll see in a lot of our goals in that we're, we're looking at what is that Healthy People 2020 objective, and how are we measuring up? So another goal is women who are pregnant or intending to become pregnant abstain from alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. So we had 48 women of childbearing age that were screened for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and we used a specialized screening tool. 16 of these women were pregnant at the time of screening. Nine of the pregnant women reported the use of alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs, and 20 of the non-pregnant women indicated use. And if they indicated use, then we definitely referred them to cessation or treatment programs, and all the women received education on the effects of alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs on pregnancy and birth outcomes.
Can I ask a question on that one? The women that you were using in this sample are those from our clinic? Where do the clients that you use these...
They're from our...
They're all on your clinical services, so they're the ones who come into the Carson City clinic.
To our clinic. Okay. And this is information that we have reported to the state on our grant. So another goal is women of childbearing age are routinely screened for depression and receive referral services when the screening is positive, and we've screened 413 women for depression in the reporting period, and 10 women received education and referral for positive reports of depression. Our another goal...
Nikki, let me interrupt you there. When you say on these goals that clients receive referral services, I assume that that means that you had a consultation with them and they chose to receive a referral service? This isn't a case of...
We're not...
Services being forced on somebody. It's when they, when you sit down with them, talk to them, and they request a service?
Correct. We're not forcing anything on them. We give them the information, but it's not a force.
Thank you. One other quick thing, Nikki. I just got to ask, when it says women of childbearing age, what is that? What is, what is that age?
Official definition, Ronnie, is 14 to 38.
Wow. That's the official?
I'm trying to remember what the number is. I'm looking to Ronnie, who's our Director of Clinical Services.
Hi. For the record, Veronica Gallus with Carson City Health and Human Services, Clinical Services. Yeah, the ages that you indicate are the actual, like, formal definition, but pretty much, in our clinic, it would be any woman. It could go up to 45, 50, 55, and basically how we would determine that is we're actually seeing the clients face-to-face and doing a medical history. So we know when women are having regular cycles and potentially being at risk for pregnancy. So for our grant purposes, that number could, could go up to age 50, age 45.
Can't go lower than 14, though, can it?
Usually, no. But, but, you know, we do do well-child checks at our services, so this grant more focuses on the women in our family planning program. But, yeah, when we do well-child checks on children, children these days can suffer from depression at very young ages and can, and symptoms may show up that they actually do need, you know, referral conversations with primary care physicians.
Thank you.
You know, in the law, there's a concept called a rule against perpetuities, designed to stop people from continuing to own property throughout the ages and the decades. A woman is presumed fertile until dead. Just a little interesting thing. How's that? So...
Yeah. Yeah. GMI. Well, this isn't going to top it, but, okay. And another goal was collaborative maternal and child health systems are in place and supported. Ronnie Gallus, our Clinical Services Manager, serves as the Vice Chair of the State of Nevada's Maternal Child Health Advisory Board. This was, this is for clinical services, and this was a customer satisfaction survey that we did. This is just, this survey focuses just on our family planning patients, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday is when we provide those services, and I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. I did put each graph on one PowerPoint just for ease of seeing it. So the, we conducted 116 surveys. You'll see that the numbers here add up to 117, and that's because one person answered completely and very, so that, that's why the numbers don't correlate there. The information from this satisfaction survey will be taken to the Quality Improvement Committee and evaluated to determine if there's any course of action that wants to be taken. So this first one, it's, I'm going to let you know also how the question was worded. So it said, "How satisfied are you with our hours and days of operation?" So completely, it was 87 or 75%. Very, 29 or 25%, and somewhat was 1, and that's less than 1%. This next question is, "How easy is it for you to make an appointment with us?" So 71 people responded very easy, or 61%. 29 responded easy, or 25%. 10 responded somewhat easy, or 8.5%. 5 responded difficult, or 4%. And then we had 1 of no response, and that was less than 1%. The question on this slide is, "How satisfied are you with the check-in and checkout process at the front desk?" And that's the front desk of the clinic, not the front desk of our facility. The question is, how, excuse me, we had 80 individuals that answered 80, or, sorry, that they were completely satisfied, or 69%. 28 individuals said they were very satisfied, or 24%. Three individuals indicated somewhat satisfied, or 2.5%. Zero responded not satisfied, and we had five that responded no response, and 4%. And when we started really looking at this survey, the five that had a no response, we had a back, there was a question on the back, and some of these five individuals did not turn the paper over and answer the five. So you'll see where it's consistently no response for five of them. So this one, the question was, "How satisfied are you with the wait times from the start of your appointment to the end?" 48 individuals answered completely, and that was 41%. 50 individuals answered very, 43%. 13 answered somewhat, or 11%. Zero said, indicated not satisfied, and then again, the 5% of no response, which is This question was, "How satisfied are you with the care you received?" 90 of them indicated they were completely satisfied, or 78%. 21 said very satisfied, or 18%. Zero said somewhat, and zero also said not satisfied. And again, we had five that no response. The question here is, "How satisfied are you with your privacy, that your privacy is protected and respected?" 97 individuals answered completely, or 84%. 12 answered very, or 12%. And zero answered somewhat or not satisfied, and then we had the five. And there were other questions on this survey. I just picked out some of the questions to share with you. So, any questions on? Okay. So environmental health. This is, we've got the graph in the upper left-hand corner, and this is showing us, we, we do food handler tests at the Health Department, and in 2012, which is the blue line up there, we did 338 tests for an average of 28 a month. For 2013, which is the red line, we did 344, which is an average of 29 a month. And in 2014, we did 312, which is an average of 26 a month. And you'll see on, each year, October, November, and December, we've got that peak, and that is the result of tests being offered at the high school culinary class. That's why we have that peak. So, and we're currently researching about referring individuals to take an online food handler test. Like I said, currently, we offer the paper and pencil test at the Health Department for $5 a test. The disadvantages for our test is, it's only in English, it's offered during set times, it's, we don't have an automated method to schedule the test at this time, and some of the advantages of the online opportunity, it's available in different languages, and that includes sign language. There's visual and audio versions. The test is kept current as to the changing evidence and laws and that. There is the flexibility in taking the test. They can do it when they want to. The individual taking the test would have an immediate response of the test result, so they would know right away whether they passed or not. They can take the test twice for one fee, and they have access to the test materials for two years. And currently, that, the cost for that online test is $15.
Nikki, can they take it down at the Health Department if need be, or at the library, or anyplace like that?
Yes. We have a computer that is accessible to the...
I think it's worth mentioning, though, that one of the things that may be brought back to the Board of Health is an adjustment in some of the, the fees structure with this. Even 15 is not very high, but what happened, and the $5, to me, is extraordinarily low, which is wonderful for food handlers, but there's a fair amount of administrative work, especially when they have lost their certification or can't verify for their next employer, and so there's other administrative costs, and that $5 doesn't really seem to be very effective at handling. So I'm just kind of putting that out there, that we may need to consider an adjustment there.
Okay. Now I'm going to go on to the epidemiology, and this is looking at the last five years of our flu reports for Carson City. And this was taken, this snapshot was taken a couple weeks ago, so I am going to show you what we look like as of January 9th. But the influenza season starts in October and ends in September of the following year, and as you can see by the graph, the green line, which is kind of, is covered up also with the, the red on top of it, but you can see how those two lines, last year and this year, are very parallel. Last year, we peaked earlier, like we did this year, compared to previous seasons of the flu. And let me pull up. So if you can see that, this is what we look like as of January 9th.
Red is, red is right now.
Yeah, this is right here is our peak.
See the spike coming up?
So I wanted to give you current...
And it's not too late to get your flu shot, so, but it does take a couple weeks to be effective, so don't hang around three-year-olds like I do.
Can I comment on that? Having gone to the urgent care, both my husband and myself, the physician said that this year's flu shot, it's a different strain going around.
Well, unfortunately, and I was going to mention that, is that, you know, it's always a guessing game from year to year, and some years, forgive the graphic, but here's the graphic, because I've been doing this. Some years, the flu strains going around and the vaccine match very closely, you know, like 90-plus percent. This year, it's in the 70% range, and for one of the vaccines, the nasal vaccine, which a lot of kids get, it's found that that particular strain does not match very well at all for the H1N1, and so this is one of those, shall we say, unlucky years. Now, having said that, the flu vaccine should still, if you get the flu, it should still make it a much milder disease, but you're right, it won't prevent as many as it has in years past.
And then this pie chart here, it actually is showing last year's, the breakdown of the influenza strains that we saw, and 87 of the cases reported were influenza A, and that's what we're seeing this year is influenza A. About 82%, this year, about 82% of the reported influenza cases are influenza A, so... A, so. Okay, going on to public health preparedness. This just gives a snapshot of our 2014 outreach and flu vaccination clinics. The October 24th, that was our point of dispensing exercise, where we gave the flu shots on a Friday. We did 1,420. November 8th was the Douglas County Pod Exercise, and we did 898 shots there. From September to December, we did approximately 40 community events, and these include places like the Senior Center, Food Pantries, any health fair, any large employers that request us to come and do flu shots for their employees and families. And we did 2,016 of those. From September to November, in our school-located vaccination clinics, we did 4,464. So, this includes, this number, the 4,464, includes Carson City, Douglas County, Lyon County, and Story County. Just in Carson City alone, we did 2,292 flu shots. So, our total flu vaccinations that we administered, 8,798.
Nikki, how does that compare to the previous year, the total number?
Our previous year for the, for the pod exercises was higher, because we, you know, we had more advertising, we had, we did it on a Saturday, and if you remember right, we weren't really even sure that we were going to be able to do a pod exercise, so.
I think that just speaks volumes for what you do, that's why I wanted to bring it up. I do have a question. When you go to the schools and you give the vaccine at the schools, do you need the parents' permission?
Yes.
So, you have a permission slip, we're just, right?
Yes, we send out packets ahead of time, the parent, they go home with the children, the parents complete the questionnaire, they send in their insurance information, sign the form, we have to have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Much as the principals would like to just get them all.
And our, and within our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Program, so, our abstinence, and up there, the AEGP, that stands for Abstinence Education Grant Program. So, we have sessions scheduled through the spring at Silver State Charter School. Within our tobacco program, Sandy Wortgro, who's here today, and she'll be discussing a QI project that she was working on, she's now working on our tobacco efforts. And we are promoting Nevada's Quit Line along with other efforts. Promoting the Quit Line is a CDC recommendation, and Sandy is also working in collaboration with the Parks and Rec Department to determine the number of signs asking patrons not to smoke that need to be replaced or installed. And she's also in the process of determining other projects to focus on. And we, Sandy and I have also been collaborating with Washoe County Health District, Southern Nevada Health District, and the state to host the 2015 Nevada Chronic Disease Planning Summit. And what's going to happen at this summit is a review of the progress on the state 2012 Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Plan, and that's taking place on January 27. And an update on our accreditation efforts. So, we've begun the process of uploading our documentation into Fab's electronic system for submission, and as we are uploading documentation, it is prepared and reviewed. We expect the process to be completed by the end of March. And after the final review from the accreditation coordinator and myself, documentation will be submitted in early May. And, and you'll see that future updates to the strategic plan will occur in the spring of 2015, and we've got an update for you today also. And the Community Health Improvement Plan, or the CHIP, will also be updated annually during the first quarter of the calendar year, and we have that to bring forth to you today And that concludes my report.
Any other questions or concerns to, for Ms. Nikki? I will entertain a motion for acceptance and possible direction to her report.
I move to accept the Director's Report and give direction to staff on Carson City Health and Human Services activities.
Second.
Motion and second has been made. Those in favor, please aye. Opposed? Thank you, Nikki. And so, we will segue seamlessly into our updated strategic plan. As, as some members will recall, the, was it about a year ago? No, 2 years ago, almost, the initial strategic plan was presented. It has been a work in progress, as it's meant to be, and so Valerie Quape is here today with Nikki to discuss some updates and changes.
I need to push a button. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Health. For the record, Valerie Quape, Carson City Health and Human Services. Thank you for seeing us today. Today, we're going to be discussing an update to our organizational strategic plan. As Dr. Pintar mentioned, the plan that was accepted in 2013 was our very first organizational strategic plan. And as is the intention of the plan, we're going to be updating it on an annual basis. We're going to talk more about that cycle in a little bit, but just kind of to keep that in mind. So, this update that you see is not a new plan, per se, it is just an update of the former plan. Since the original publication, we've undergone a lot of different changes, such as changes in leadership, changes of programming, changes of resources and funding. So, all of those aspects came into play when we were undergoing this review and seeing what we were really needing to do with the plan itself. First, I would like to point you to page 4, so IV, the table of contents. There were some issues that came up as we were preparing for this, and so we're going to try to address those as I go along. If you have any questions, please let me know. And we're also going to start out with some other things that I noticed that need to be taken care of before the plan is published. On page IV, or 4, the 2014 update is listed on page 6, or as being on page 6, it's actually on page 7. So, on that note, we're going to go ahead and turn to page 7, if you will. I'm sorry, I lied. Turn to page 6 itself. Under the introduction, on the second paragraph, the first, the first sentence of the second paragraph reads, "Although CCHHS had not published a strategic plan previously, the development of new partnerships and projects, et cetera, et cetera." Since this is an updated version, the wording of that is going to be changed to previous to 2013, because this is still the same plan. We just want to make sure that it's known that this isn't an old plan. All right, now, we can turn to page 7. So, the 2014 update page discusses many of the broad changes that we made. First and foremost, there was a new format to our tables. We added some new categories, one of them being, we have listed what exact, what division is responsible for each objective and activity. As we were continuing or starting work on the strategic plan, we noticed that that wasn't necessarily clearly defined, and we want to make sure that responsibility is clearly defined within our strategic plan itself. Another one of those changes is, we added another category where it lists out any related plans, sorry, any, any other related plans or national standards to which the objectives or activities are related. This helps us in many ways. First off, it helps us for grant purposes to show that we are addressing some of these national standards. It helps us for national public health accreditation, to help us tie in our activities with the standards of accreditation. And also, later down the road, when we are going through this accreditation process again and looking for new documentation, it'll help us identify areas that we could potentially use for that documentation, since this first round was kind of difficult trying to find that documentation. All right, so, from here, we are going to go to page 8 through 9 is where we have, or I'm sorry, 8 through 19, is where we have the new grids themselves. Also, it has been brought to my attention that it would be a really good idea to insert the headings on tables that spill over on more than 2 pages, so we will include that in the changes as well. On page 10, Strategic Priority 2, Objective A, Maintain Essential Health Services for Vulnerable Populations. Activity 3, B, Identify Gaps in Services, Check for Feasibility, and Plan to Add Those to Pursue Services. On the timeline, there was a question, I understand, about the annual first report happening by December 31, 2014. What this objective is related to is actually working our community health improvement plan. And myself and Dustin Booth, the manager of the Disease Control and Prevention Division, as well as Veronica Gallus, who is the manager of the Clinical Services Division, have been working with the State Health Division and other partners, I'm sorry, State Department of Public and Behavioral Health, they're no longer the Health Division, to implement a focus group project. That project was implemented prior to December 31, 2014, and a transcript, a report of data to summarize what we found during that, during that project, was developed by the end of the year. The reason why that objective was included is because we were initially planning on having this update go before the Board of Health in December. So, my apologies for any confusion there. Future summaries will be provided by October in following years. So, any more questions on that one? Okay, moving on. Also, let's see, we have a lot of different successes and different challenges related to the strategic plan itself. Some of the challenges, like I mentioned before, include staff turnover, so that's always an issue. However, we do have a lot of successes. They are all listed out, the, I'm sorry, the strategic plan objectives that were previously completed were listed out in the annual report, so I will spare you from going through that list, because I want to keep this short and sweet for you. However, some of them that we can highlight would be, for example, in the previous rendition of the strategic plan, Strategic Priority 1, Section B, was to look at updating and expanding core community health data. And that was on the previous rendition, it's no longer there because it was completed. One of the activities was to work on a community data listing that we could use to improve the data that we gather for our next community health assessment. Dustin Booth, aforementioned manager of Disease Control and Prevention, was able to sit on a work group with the State Department of Public and Behavioral Health to develop a statewide core data listing. And so, we're going to be attempting to implement that with our community partners for our CHAW coming up in the next couple of years, and that will help guide a lot of our work with our next CHAW, and then also, I'm sorry, CHAW, Community Health Assessment. Dr. Pintar was giving me the aye. And the following Community Health Improvement Plan. Other updates include updates to Carson City Municipal Code Chapters 9 and 7, those were in the previous strategic plan. Updated activities for that would include setting a more timely schedule to review that code and ensure that it's being updated in alignment with any relevant state or federal regulations. Other updates include moving forward with the cross jurisdictional sharing project that Nikki mentioned earlier, and so it was nice to kind of tie that in. And then also, Strategic Priority 4, Section C, was related to quality improvement. It still is, it's just been expanded and updated. A lot of the projects that you have seen presented to you in previous Board of Health meetings are all QI projects that resulted from processes and procedures, and also trainings that we had implemented in accordance with the strategic plan. So, there's more detail as to the reporting system in Appendix D on page 24. One of the big changes that we have implemented is an improved reporting system that does not require division managers to create any sort of special report. So, the idea behind this is to cut down staff time required to report upon our progress in our strategic plan. The smart sheet system is a cloud-based system that acts as like an interactive spreadsheet, so to speak. And so, the nice thing about that is our division managers, who are very busy people, can update their smart sheets as to the progress that they're making from anywhere, and then I, all I have to do is just export a copy of that into PDF, and we have our quarterly reports. These are going to be done in the first quarter, I'm sorry, the first business day of the first quarter, I'm sorry, the first day of the first quarter. Am I saying that right? First day of the, each quarter, thank you, Dr. Pintar, so that we can maintain our quarterly update monitoring process. Because we fell behind on our updating process, and we found that doing this in the fall did not work out very well for our staff, we're going to then set our update process to the spring, and so we will be dispersing our packets to update the strategic plan again this next month.
Valerie, on Appendix A, on some of this, especially pertaining to the animal shelter, the information is old. How soon will, will this be updated?
This was an initial SWOT analysis that we were not, it was done department-wide, and so we were not necessarily going to be completing another one of those SWOT analyses that run throughout the entire department until the second version of the strategic plan is done, probably in 2017. However, what we can do is, we can address this issue, because this was information that was collected, and we can add an additional paragraph or narrative to explain the changes since then. All right. As far as reporting is concerned, there was much discussion internally about how to best improve our reporting systems, because previously, we had simply reported the progress of the strategic plan in our annual report. However, after attending some further and more in-depth Fab training, we, Fab being the Public Health Accreditation Board, we discovered that that reporting system wasn't going to meet their requirements. So, in order to give information to the public that is easily digestible, as well as meet the requirements, what we're going to do is, we're going to continue the inclusion of progress in the strategic plan in our annual report, and then produce a more technical, very brief, internal report to satisfy Fab requirements. So, any questions about that? All right. That's all I have. So, any further questions about the plan itself?
I just have a comment. So, this, our strategic plan will also help us when we work on the city strategic plan as far as the Health Department is concerned. So, a lot of what you're seeing here will bring up into the city strategic plan when we start working on that.
And I was going to offer specifically to you, because you, you know, it's like, what the heck, did you just throw in front of me that if there are questions or concerns, please, you know, give Nikki or I a call, and we can give you details of some of these, because it, it's written in, somewhat in, what's the word, something speak, when you're trying to make it?
I don't know, it's pretty archaic, though.
Yeah, that's.
Arcane, I guess is the word.
Yeah, so, it's, I, sometimes you read this, and I'll look at it and see, what the, oh, yeah, that's that project, so, just, just from that perspective. So, I will now entertain a motion to accept the updated Health and Human Services strategic plan.
I move to accept the updated Carson City Health and Human Services strategic plan.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Thank you. And along the same, similar lines, the Community Health Improvement Plan, which they persist in calling CHIP, is, is also, needs some updates, and I believe, Ms. Valerie, you get to do that, too. All right.
Again, for the record, Valerie Quape with Carson City Health and Human Services. So, as with the strategic plan, the Carson City Health Improvement Plan, Community Health Improvement Plan, rather, also known as the CHIP, is intended to be a living document that we update on a regular basis and report annually on as well. So, you'll see many of those changes that are made are very similar to those in the strategic plan. First, I'd like to draw your attention to page 5, the 2014 Annual First, I'd like to draw your attention to page 5, the 2014 Annual Report and Update. So this page gives a broad narrative as to the changes that we made within the Community Health Improvement Plan itself. Some items such as, we changed the subcommittee groupings. Although each community issue does maintain its own subcommittee, sometimes it made life easier for our partner organizations to allow them to meet together and create one larger joint subcommittee. Some of the reasons for this, it helps improve partner engagement if they only have to come to one or two extra meetings instead of five, since they are very busy people with a lot on their plates already. Some of these subcommittees that are now meeting together include the Committees for Community Issue A, which is Improving Access to Health Information, Health Resources in Carson City, and Community Issue B, which is Improving Access to Health Information, Health Data from Community Partners. And so we've got that resource to the public's component in Part A, and then data collection component in Community Issue B. So those two are moving together. Kathy Bartos from Carson, Partnership Carson City, is the lead on that subcommittee as well. Another joint subcommittee.
Sorry, Valerie, I just wanted to interrupt for a minute and remind everybody that these Community Issues A through K are what were identified initially by a very large community representative, represented group of the most pressing health issues for Carson City. And so that's, we didn't, we, or somebody at the Health Department, it wasn't the Board of Health, it was a much bigger consortium of folks who came up and eventually the issues were distilled into A through K. So I think that's kind of the baseline of like, well, where'd you come up with this? Why is this important? It was an interesting process and one that we will repeat in the coming years.
Also, Community Issues H, Teen Pregnancy, and Community Issue I, Sexually Transmitted Diseases, has become a joint subcommittee. And we've got some progress to report on that as well. And we also have some standalone subcommittees, and those include Community Issue D, Mental Health, Community Issue J, Alcohol and Substance Abuse, and Community Issue K, Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety and Access. The, what we call the Chronic Disease Prevention Subcommittee Grouping was meeting all as one, but however, as we will discuss, there's been a lapse in progress in that area. On that note, when we talk about successes and challenges, our main challenges can be seen in our tabled community issues. Those include Community Issue C, Oral Health, and then our Chronic Disease Prevention Subcommittee Grouping.
Page 11.
Okay, so Oral Health is on page 15.
If you'd like to believe me, you may, because I'm the theoretic chair of Oral Health. I, well, you can read, but it's discouraging for me, the lack of progress that our community has been able to make in getting oral health more accessible to people who need it.
Dr. Pintar, can you just elaborate? Is that the lack of dentists participating locally, or what's the issue?
We've got plenty of dentists. What we have primarily is a lack of resources for those people who are not insured dentally. Is that a correct way? I don't, it's not a lack of providers, it's a lack of appropriate programs to provide, yeah. And that's, as I say, it's been discouraging for me. And it certainly isn't our issue alone. I mean, it's experienced across Nevada quite widely. I do try to keep in contact with the other statistics, but it is one of those discouraging things, because dental insurance is not mandated, it is not, as you well know, not often offered, and dental services can be expensive. So many folks do not have the ability to access dental services. The only mandated insurance is publicly is Medicaid, and that only applies to children under 18. And it's very, very limited services along the lines of, I believe, some of the financial limits would be somewhere along the lines of $600 a year, which is not much.
Toothbrush.
Well, yeah, you get a toothbrush and, you know, if you, if you need more than one cavity filled, you're probably out of luck. So anyway, I've tried not to read too much of a negative Nellie, but it is discouraging.
And then also our Chronic Disease Subcommittee Grouping, Community Issue E, Type 2 Diabetes on page 21, Smoking and Tobacco Sessation on page 23, and Obesity, page 25, have all seen a lapse in progress as well. This is largely due to a lack of local resources or organizations that can lead these subcommittees. We're hoping that with the addition of our new Tobacco Sessation Coordinator, that we can rope her into leading that subcommittee at least. However, you'll notice that for these tabled community issues, we do have new objectives, and those objectives are to find leads for each of these subcommittees. It is possible that during our next community health assessment or Community Health Improvement Plan, to be completed in 20, let's see, 2016, 2017, somewhere in there, we may end up leaving these issues out depending on what comes of that community health assessment and what resources are available to us at that time. Because we do need to address things that we can't actually address and do something about.
But in the meanwhile, I would encourage all the board members, if you know of resources or a person or an agency that we might contact or that we might persuade to cooperate with us a little bit, then that would be well appreciated.
One comment I have on, on mental health. In talking to Steve and Mary Walker, I understand that Medicaid reimbursements are improving towards mental health and.
They are. And I think I've mentioned before, it's interesting, but if you have a mental health issue, Medicaid is actually one of the better insurance sources to have. They cover a broad range of services and they, they put very few limits on the services that you need. So, and, but, most importantly, their reimbursement rates are improving for this. So that's a very positive thing, yes.
And then on a lighter note, we have many successes from our Community Health Improvement Plan as well over the last, let's see, it's coming up on two, three years now since its initial publication. I'm going to highlight just some of them, because there would be too much to list within the amount of time that I have today, so, which is always good news. First of all, Community Issue A, which is Access to Health Information and Health Resources in Carson City, led by Partnership Carson City, has helped build an internet resource listing hosted by Partnership Carson City. The comment was also made that it would be really great if we could have better access to that listing. We will ensure that the link provided within the document that's published on the Get Healthy Carson City, our website, is hyperlinked to the Partnership Carson City website. Also, it is one of the objectives for that community issue that a plan be put in place as far as marketing, which includes the publication of the link and links to that resource page on all partner websites, including us. So we do intend to help publicize that resource listing quite a bit more. Also, as previously mentioned, we had Carson City Health and Human Services, Carson City Health and Human Services staff participate in the statewide work group to develop the Core Indicator List, and that was a part of Community Issue B, Access to Data Resources. Community Issue D, Mental Health, Carson, led by Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health, Suzie Whitman, has built some wonderful partnerships and have, they've been able to pursue a lot of transitional housing projects that they're kind of trying to move forward, and then also have plans to include the development of a mental health resource listing. And we're strongly encouraging that resource listing to be held in conjunction with the existing resource listing from Community Issue A. The Teen Pregnancy Prevention and STD Subcommittee, which is Community Issues H and I, implemented their focus groups, and that was our main focus over the last year and a half, was getting that focus group project together and moving forward with it. The next meeting for that subcommittee is actually next week, and we will be discussing plans and next steps as to how we want to potentially implement further focus group projects, or what we want to do with the data that we have at the moment.
And I think to expand upon that a little bit, the idea of the focus groups is to actually get from the young men and women of our community what they need and what they don't need, as far as sexual health information and sexual health services. And so I think this is a big step, because before it's been me or you telling, you know, guessing what they want. And now we're going to have more direct input as to what's needed and what's wanted in our community.
Furthermore, we not only surveyed teens, but we were also able to survey parents as well. And so we were able to gather some really great information from them. Unfortunately, we'd have to cancel our Young Adult Focus Group, which was young adults ages 19 through 24, which is our population that sees the highest rate of STDs. We wanted to see what the problem is. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody come and talk to us, so maybe that's not the direction we need to take with them. We'll also be discussing plans in order to gather better information from that group as well. Other successes include Community Issue K, Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety. We have a little bit of a different format from that community issue. Our lead is our Western Nevada State Forest School Coordinator, but instead of leading one group, she acts as more of a liaison between several community organizations. Also, this group has merged with the Carson City Public Works Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Board, just to ensure that there's no duplication, because this was one of their grant deliverables to have that board. And so we wanted to make sure that everybody was being represented and we weren't working harder at the same thing that we had to, right? This community issue has seen a lot of teamwork between many different local organizations, too many to list, in fact, right here. Also, the Western Nevada State Forest School Program, which is housed at CCHHS, is seeing a lot of growth and has had a lot of success, including record participation in Walk to School Day 2014, with 40% of students that were able to participate, actually participating, which is a much higher number than seen in previous years. Also, upcoming Nevada Moves Day is in March 2015, which is basically the spring version of Walk to School Day. In an effort to improve previous reporting and updated processes to the entire document itself, we have also implemented the same smart sheet system for our reporting purposes. And so each of the community issue leads has their own smart sheet that they are responsible for updating. We are taking quarterly snapshots of those smart sheets to ensure that we are monitoring progress. And then we are going to do an overall review of the CHIP document itself in the last quarter of every calendar year. So the CHIP will be reviewed in October through December 2015, whereas the next rendition, or the next strategic plan review will happen this spring. So, to avoid any confusion there. That's all I have. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Valerie. I just wanted to point out to the members of the Board of Health, the last page, the 10 Essential Public Health Services, and it's certainly not anything new, but it, I like to look at these because it serves as a useful reminder of what we're supposed to be doing as Board of Health. So at that point, I will entertain a motion for acceptance of the updated Community Health Improvement Plan.
I move to accept the updated Community Health Improvement Plan, CHIP, as published.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in second has been made. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And again, questions may come up, please feel free to find me, call me. Nikki or Valerie also will know more details, but I'll, I'll cover up for them. And Nikki, the Workforce Development Plan, would you like to review that for us a little bit?
This is a plan that guides the training and development of our workforce at Carson City Health and Human Services, and it also helps us in the development of our succession plan. It standardizes the orientation, competency, and education of the workforce. And the competencies, they're based on the core competencies for public health professionals, which is a set of skills for the broad practice of public health. We, and I'll show you what I'm talking about here, we haven't adopted all of it, but it does give us that basis to, to develop our competence. So this is a document, it's on the Public Health Foundation website, and it, it was revised and adopted by the Council of Linkages. So this is where we're getting our information, when we're looking at the competencies of our workforce. And we have a new mandatory orientation requirements of staff that's tailored to divisions. And it's, staff see this, and I can definitely let you guys look at this. It looks, it breaks it down into each division and each tier, so that, you know, the employees within their tier, are they, excuse me, support staff, are they in the clinic? It tailors to their position. And we're, we're a little behind in this area, so we're catching up on some things. And examples of new, the orientation requirements are like the HIPAA education that we now have yearly, and the emergency response, the essentials of public health, like Dr. Pintar just spoke about, the incident command system. And so it's that type of stuff that we want our staff to be well-trained in. And we're in the process of developing standardized competency binders, and this is what they look like. And so all the employees there, for the audience here, all the employees' documentation will be in this, and what their position requires. So everything will be kept in one place, and they can refer back to that. Within our plan, if I can have you turn to page 8, we talk about there about a public health core competency assessment, and that is done online. And I'll just give you a brief look at the, so this is the assessment, and it is, it's by three different tiers. So you've got your administrative staff, your program, or your management staff. It takes the employee about 20 minutes to complete, and they rate themselves in different areas. And then, when they submit everything, then it gives their areas that they need improvement in, or what they're proficient in. So this is an area where they would answer the questions and they'd either rate themselves on one, two, three, or four.
Nikki, is that cross-reference, since they're rating themselves, is that cross-reference with a supervisor or department manager? Because obviously, if you're filling it out, if you're evaluating yourself, that could be somewhat skewed.
Yes, it would be. Then the manager, you know, they're going to look at this and, and look at how they, the employee rated themselves. It's like a self-assessment. And the manager will also have input, so it's looking at the whole picture, what the employee feels and what the manager actually feels is going on, or what, you know, they can, that can guide their goals for the year.
One of the interesting things, when we were looking at the background or the research for this, is that usually the employees are harder on themselves than their managers. So, that was interesting information, I think, from both perspectives.
So, and also within the document, we speak to a training committee. That committee has been established, and it's, it's a representative from each division that's on the committee. And the first meeting is in the next couple of weeks. And what that committee's going to do, it's going to present and produce training opportunities. It's going to act as a resource to staff to suggest training needs or mandatory training or orientation needs. It's also going to be, that committee's also going to be able to help if they've got questions on this self-assessment. They'll be reviewing the Workforce Development Plan annually, and then, and like I said, they'll be helping with this assessment. So, and if I can draw your attention to page 12, this, it also, here, it outlines our training goals. This, it also here, it outlines our training goals and objectives and what our implementation plan is. And then on page 13, it also, within here, provides a curricula and training schedule. So as you can see, we've developed a workforce plan, and that our plan on December 2014 would be presented and employees be trained. And we're almost through with that. So Sandy Warkow, who will be up and presenting the QI, next QI project, she's been working very hard on this and has been our champion of this. And then our, like I said, the curriculum and training schedule, it outlines which staff needs to have which training, and then how that also lines up with those core competencies. So it's a cross-reference. So that's my overview.
Thank you. Are there questions for Nikki regarding the workforce development plan? This is something that I think the department has been, I know the department has been contemplating for quite a while, and so it's nice to see it in its, in paper. And I do thank Sandy for a lot of hard work with this. And that segues me, oh, let's, no, let's just discuss that. We don't have to approve that. All right. That does segue me nicely into a big positive, I think, of Health and Human Services applying for accreditation is an improved focus on how we can improve the quality of services that we deliver. And part of that is engaging in quality improvement projects. You've heard reports from a couple, and what I'd like to do today is have Sandy Warkow, who is an RN, present the most recent one that she has been leading.
For the record, I'm Sandy Warkow with Carson City Health and Human Services, and I have had the pleasure of working in the school-located vaccine program. And as you've heard, I will be moving on to other projects as well. So one of, I have two QI projects, and my QI project number one, that's why it's labeled this way, is actually in relation to improving our demographic and documentation forms for the parents, so that we on the backend have improvement in our billing and our revenue. Where do I need to point this to go? Okay. So as with all of our QI projects, you know, we do the plan-do-check-act formula. So the first thing is, we really had to plan what was our issues. And we really saw that we had a lot of errors in our demographic information, just on our forms. So we wanted to start there because that would, in turn, help us with our billing errors, our revenue, you know, increasing our revenue, as well as just improving our electronic health records, that they were more accurate. And our charting was more accurate because we had the correct information. As you're aware, the school-located vaccine program, these forms go home to parents, they come back to the school, and now all we have in front of us is a five-year-old child. So we're not getting, we can't get a lot of changes to that information at that time. So we really need to make sure our forms are clear and resourceful for the parent to understand how to fill that out. So some of the resources we were going to need was really form development. We knew that we had to do more training and education to the staff who are developing these forms, as well as collecting the information. So we knew we needed to do that. We knew we needed this year to scan the forms into the electronic record. Last year, we did not do that. We had the capability of doing that. We did not do that. And so when we found an error or rejection in billing, we had to go back to file folders, 5,000 forms, to find the form and see, was it something that was on the form that was correct, and we entered it wrong. So we are scanning our forms into the record now. We really needed to have good administrative support onsite, people who were trained, who understood the importance of demographic information. And then we needed additional supplies, the copies of the forms, the insurance information. We even had discussed bringing, and we did a couple times, a portable copier to the site so we could copy insurance cards if they were available.
Cindy, if we could go back for just a second. You say that you're scanning the forms in now, but are they interactive after you scan them, or are you just scanning them as a PDF? So in other words, if you have to make a correction, do you have to go back and input the information manually, or is it an interactive PDF?
It's not interactive. It's scanned in like a PDF. So you, but the form is there, so we can just see if it was as simple as a typo. You know, the demographic information got typed in correctly. We have to scan and say, oh, you missed a zero in that insurance ID number. And then we can immediately correct that in our record to rebill. So it's all within the system.
Is there the ability to have PDF software to convert that to an interactive form?
Not that I'm aware of within our software of our e-clinical system. It certainly is a question to ask, and we do have them, we do have them coming out this month, e-clinical, and they're going to be helping us with some revenue training. So it certainly is a question to ask if they have that capability.
It just seems like it's of limited help if you can't, if you have to go back and manually make the change anyway. I just don't see where, it means you can look it up faster, and that's it. It doesn't mean that you can correct it faster.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. So this is our, we have a clearinghouse that we send all of our initial billing out to, and then that clearinghouse basically does a quick scrubbing of our claims. We've scrubbed them first, then the bill, the clearinghouse scrubs these claims for us. So they look for errors that maybe we didn't catch, that they know is not going to pass the sniff test going out to the insurance providers. So our clearinghouse will do that, and then they will also send them out to our insurance providers and keep track of any of our rejection errors. These are our rejection errors. So you can see in January and February, which is after we have entered all of our school-located and community immunizations that have been offsite, that that is the timeline that we have sent them out to the insurance, and this is the errors we were getting back. And it was quite significant. The red line is the actual benchmark that the clearinghouse provides with us across the country. They have tens of thousands of clients, so we benchmark against each other, and the benchmark is 5%. So you can see, we had an issue that needed to be looked at. All right, next. So first, of course, was just really improving our form documentation. So we really had to look at the forms. This is the old form prior to this year. It was actually two pages. It wasn't really, I mean, it just kind of ran together in two pages, and that created an issue, we felt, with just having two pages, and in turn to the next page, they were tired of writing on things. And it also did not capture our Medicare audience. And we have a lot of Medicare, even in the schools. We have people who are still working in the schools on Medicare in the community, and we weren't capturing the appropriate Medicare information.
Sandy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to clarify for the Board, is that the Health Department does have contracts with a number of insurance companies, not just the public insurance companies, which are Medicaid and Medicare, but has, I wasn't...
We're probably over 20 now.
Yeah, yeah. Believe me, with all the applications I've been filling out, I think so.
All her signatures.
So the idea being, as people become insured, under, as they should be under the law, that we are able to capture revenue that their insurance should cover. And so that's one of the big pushes behind there, is that instead of delivering services for free, we're able to capture what revenue we can for those services.
Yeah, and that's kind of the trend across the country with public health. I mean, communities are having to realize that some of their services, they have to, they have to find some revenue source, too. So next page. So things that we did. So we established a committee that actually looked at the forms, reviewed the letters, looked at everything that we had been sending out, and how could we change that to improve our process? So we completed that in March of 2014, and that was our intention, because in April of 2014, we were going to trial our forms with our T-DAP, which is our tetanus outreach in the schools. The forms at that time, when we put them out, so this is a new one, the form became a single page. There were very bold things, things that we made sure we felt like it was bold enough that they could interpret the information and get it all on the form and have it a single page. And we were very successful with our T-DAPS using this new form. So but the other part of that is that we realized, in talking with the schools, we got the schools' input, what should we do to make the forms better for parents? What does that look like? And they felt like, because so many forms go home to schools, and if we're going to try to put this out at the beginning of the year, you know, when the parents are getting 20 forms to fill out, we should color-code our forms. So we, this is our actual packet that we do send out to the schools, and it's color-coded. So a parent letter goes out first. It's in blue. We ask them in the parent letter to complete the yellow form and send it back to the school. So the only thing they have to send back is this yellow form. And then the last part is, we do attach an envelope, because some of our uninsured were asking for $20 or whatever you can afford towards the administration of the vaccine. The vaccine is covered by the state VFC program, but we do ask for that donation, and we do that in the clinic as well. And then when we developed this letter, we did choose to put a column to say, would you like to make a donation to our program? And surprisingly, we got quite a few donations to the program, even from insured people. So that's what that currently looks like. And then the last part is, we really did have to improve the links on our website. So when parents called and said, I lost my form, and the date's coming up, we could direct them to our website, and they could download the form and fill it out and send it to the school. So next page. And then we did a training process. So we decided who, you know, we put out to our volunteers, as well as our current staff, who would be in charge of this administrative process of the forms. And we provided an actual training they had to come to. It was a PowerPoint with interactive forms that we would say, we would practice, this is what you're looking for, this is how you're going to highlight. We had them highlighting in different colors because it directed our attention to give the correct vaccine and that we were, had the correct information. So we did that. We asked, we trained the school staff. If they had the time, would you please just look at legibility of the form? You know the students. So if they said, this is Joe Smith, and his legal name is Joseph, surprisingly, that's going to create a rejection in insurance, because we aren't using the legal name that's tied to that ID. So we asked the school staff and trained them, say, you know, is it legible, and is this that child's real name? And so they were part of that. And then we had hot washes after many of our events, so that we could just review what was working, what wasn't working. So next page. So where are we at now? So we are in that process, where we are entering 5,000 forms into our electronic records so we can submit it out to our clearinghouse, and we have started that process. In December, we submitted out, including the clinic, 949 claims. So we're starting to gear up. But really, our checking point is going to be after February, where we have entered all that, we've sent them all out, and we know what our rejection rates are going to look like. In December, of those 949 claims that have gone out, we had a 2.1% error rate. So if that's an indication so far, I think our process is working, and that is really exciting for us, and credit to the administration staff, because they're the ones diligently looking at this, making sure we had the correct information before we submit it to the clearinghouse. And then just in addition, we are tallying just where is the trending of our errors? Is it legibility? Is it, are we missing the ID numbers? Parents tend to not put the zeros in front of their Medicaid number. They think the zeros don't mean anything. Blue Cross Blue Shield has alphabet before their numbers. Parents think the alphabet letters aren't important, but they're very important, because they tell us where we have to send the claim to. So we're just keeping track of some of that. So just next page, Nikki. And this is an example of that. This is an example of how we get those error rates from our clearinghouse. So you can see, they just sent us our rates. That first error percent is what they catch, and then the yellow, the payer errors, is what the insurance companies send back and say, oh, you didn't have everything you needed. And the next one is, this is an example of that tally sheet, that of information we're collecting to see where we can improve on. So acting, our last part is really, we're going to wait for that report card to come out after February. We will gather as a committee again, make sure forms are working, any last-minute changes, issues before we go into the next year. Are we going to adopt, adapt, or abandon the changes to the forms? And then I'll have one more thing. Thank you very, very much for listening to me. And I just had to have this slide, Dr. Pintar. So I don't know if you guys know, we have a mascot now, Hermy the Jermy. And you just never know. We are trying desperately to convince our health officer to wear our mascot. He's cute. He just needs like a t-shirt and a hat, and he'll be cuter. So do you have any questions of me?
Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sandy. I do want, as Sandy mentioned, the public health is needing to find sources of revenue other than public revenue, so to speak. And so being competent at billing insurance is a skill that public health has not had to have before, and so we're developing that skill quite nicely, I think.
Good job.
Oh, thank you very much.
So I will entertain public comment on any of the matters that may have been included or not included on this agenda. Where am I, G? Oh, well, okay. Was public healthcare when we meet? No, probably not. So to tentatively schedule our Board of Health meetings for March 19th, May 21st, July 16th, September 17th, and November 19th.
We had some late material that it changes that March meeting to April 2nd.
Okay. All right. I'm going to look at you, Mr. Manager, because you changed them all last year and messed up my schedule.
It was not me last year.
Well, after April it was. So April, May, July, September, November, as stated. Nobody has any major surgeries planned around there?
We're here anyway.
Huh?
We're here anyway.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying. All right. So somebody needs to so-move this for me, I believe.
I move to approve the Board of Health meeting for 2015 in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors' regular meetings, meeting days on April 2nd, May 21st, July 16th, September 17th, and November 19th.
A motion in second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Now, public, I'm sorry to delay you. Is there any public comment? All right. The end.
We're going to take a recess for a few minutes, and then we're going to reconvene in about 10 minutes. in about 10 minutes.
Replace the existing APRN position. This position was authorized, or at least approved through our IFC group. It's also funded through the interlocal agreement that we have with Douglas County and Carson City. As the note says, you need to correct me if I'm wrong, there's no general fund impact on this, even though there's an increase of 66,000, but that'll be picked up through the interlocal agreement from Douglas. Is that correct?
That is correct. So Nikki Aker...
Anything else you want to add?
I just want to add that Karen Good from Douglas County was going to try and be here. So she submitted a letter to me, and if it's okay, I'll read this letter, and then I'll give it to Kathy. But it's, "Dear Board Members," and it's in regard to the Advanced Practice Registered Nurse, Douglas County Community Clinic. Douglas County Community Clinic has been staffed with a part-time, 20 hours per week advanced practice registered nurse since the position started. After some conversation, it was identified that there is a need for additional hours for this position. We understand that the additional hours would allow for preparation to move to a new center, additional clinical hours to assure symptomatic patients or residents can be seen in a more timely manner, and onsite oversight of day-to-day operations at the new facility. Douglas County is happy to agree to increase the advanced practice registered nurse hours from 20 hours per week up to 36 hours per week, including the addition of benefits. We also understand that this change can be made without exceeding our current fiscal year 15 contracted budget. We are thrilled to see that the clinic is doing so well and understand the need for the expansion of services. We look forward to a continued partnership and service to the residents of Douglas County. And sincerely, by Karen Good, who's the manager of Douglas County Social Services.
Board members, comments, questions?
Nikki, as you and I talked about earlier, the job posting needs to be updated.
Correct.
So that'll be taken care of before it gets posted?
Definitely.
And do you think that this is going to be filled internally or externally?
Excuse me?
Do you think the position will be filled internally or externally?
We're going to open it up and first try internally, see what candidates we get, and then go from there.
I want to go back to one agenda item. I do apologize for not bringing it up then. I wanted to say thank you to you and to Susan for the presentations that you gave to me and Brad about the clinics, the health. I mean, it was very informative. I was very surprised what's lacking in the community. I was even more surprised how underfunded we are. And I could go on and on. But I think it's a department that really we need to bring to the forefront, because I think it does, after this meeting with you and Susan, it does bring a lot of things forward, and I hope to be a part of that as we go forward, because I know how important this is for the community. And again, I just want to say thank you to both you and Susan, if you could pass that along to her, and I'll shoot her an email as well. I apologize for not saying that during the discussion.
Well, and I thank both of you for taking an interest in looking at that and sitting through those meetings. So I appreciate that.
I think Jim hit the nail on the head, and that is, sometimes the community health preparedness and things like that take a backseat to, you know, what I call the other hard services, you know, water, sewer, roads, stuff like that, cops, policemen. And I think what Jim said is absolutely correct about the importance of community health in terms of the long-term sustainability of your community, and also to reduce the costs that your community incurs. So I think he said it for all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, all right. Public, want to comment on the advanced practical nurse issue? Don't see any board, anybody?
I move to approve a full-time advanced practice registered nurse position at the Community Health Clinic in Douglas County, replacing the existing part-time APNRN position. This position will be funded by the interlocal agreement between Douglas County and Carson City.
There's a motion, there's our second discussion on the motion. Hearing on all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried unanimously. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
See you next Wednesday now, right?
Okay.
All right. All right. We ready for local motor fuel taxes and roads? You ready to go? So we'll take up item number 43. This is a presentation discussion on how transportation funds, including local motor fuel taxes dedicated to roadway maintenance and capital projects, are expended. This is the same that you've given to the RTC? Or similar?
Yes, it's very similar to what was recently presented to the RTC.
All right, go.
All right. Indeed, this is typically within the purview of the Carson City Regional Transportation Commission. A very similar presentation was made to them in September of this year, and related information has been presented to this Board of Supervisors as well. We're here today, inspired by some recent reports in the media. We actually received comments from many individuals in the community that may call about, "Why is my road not getting fixed?" Or, "Do we have enough money for this or that?" And additionally, a significant law which may impact funding in the future was passed at the last legislative session, and significant proposals are proposed for this coming legislative session, so we thought this was an ideal time to come before you. The maintenance of the street system. The street system is a large system. It's about 260 miles of roads, primarily local roads, but also larger arterials and collectors. And the roads are deteriorating constantly. They deteriorate starting right after you build them, and it accelerates thereafter. We first developed a pavement management system primarily in-house, as we run it in-house with some data collected on the outside, in 2011. The roads are ranked on what's called an overall condition index, an OCI, from a scale from 0 to 100, and could be called excellent, acceptable, or poor. The average right now is about 64, and indeed, the condition of the arterials and collectors is better than that of the local streets. That is intentional. We know that that's where a lot of the traffic happens, you know, the fair views, the Carson Streets of the world. This map is now just over a year old, but it is indicative of what we have out there. We have a lot of roads that do fall into the acceptable and good category, excuse me, excellent, but we also have many that do fall into the poor category. And as you can see, the ones that show up in red, we're not going to pick on any of them, but they are located in all areas of town.
Excuse me, Pat?
Yes, sir.
I could just go back to slide number three?
Yep.
When it says the...
Three, yes.
Yeah, the goal, the bottom line?
Yes.
Local is 6.1, and goal is 70. Couldn't we have the goal be 100? I mean, why is the goal set so low?
If you could set the goal, I mean, you could set the goal at 100. I don't think that 100 is a reasonable one to attain. We did select that several years ago when we set this up as something that we don't believe that the condition of our roads is acceptable overall, as they are. But 100 is, 100 would be spectacularly expensive, so not reasonable.
True, but the way this looks, I'm not picking on you or anything, but if the goal is 70, and you say, "Hey, we're at 61," gosh darn, we're awfully good.
Well, that's relative, and it is different people's perspective, but we also looked at what other agencies do as well, what is reasonable to try to maintain. And we know that the, that those numbers are decreasing as we speak. Okay. The pavement management system, it is an actual computer program that takes into condition, or takes into account the type of surface we have. We have mostly asphalt pavements, the condition of those pavements, and different type of maintenance activities that are available to us. Everything from minor crack filling and seals to actual reconstruction. And I included this picture, this is a new one. This van has been driving around town for the last two, three weeks with a break for the holidays. This is what collects automated consistent data. So it's very, it's reproduced, and we did this four years ago with the same folks, so we know that we have consistent data measuring how our roads are deteriorating, or improving in some cases. When you do a system like this, you have the history, you look at the, how far out can you forecast your funding or deterioration of the roads? You look at which roads you want to try to look at, you know, all of them, just the locals, just the arterials. And the two primary ways you can look at it is either based on budget-based, here's how much money I have, what will happen if I use that much money, or OCI, the quality-driven, if I want to have this target, how much will it cost me to maintain the roads at that level? We've seen this before. Basically, the concept of this graph is that as a road ages, the deterioration accelerates. And you want to make sure that, or you want to try to at least, maintain the roads adequately at certain points in their lives to keep them from deteriorating further, and that way, doing it the most efficient and cost-effective way as possible, minimizing our costs, or in our case, maximizing the available funds. Overall, if you look at those average numbers, what I had before, the 61.1, those numbers move relatively slowly. This is a big ship, it doesn't turn quickly. But, but right now, the number is decreasing, and it doesn't happen equally across the system. We do have roads that fail faster than other roads. We do have different conditions, different pavement types that were used, different subsurface conditions that do affect which roads will last longer, and of course, we have different traffic volumes as well. The current system we use, we average that, or excuse me, we estimate that we need just over $2 million, $2.2 million in capital projects to properly maintain these roads. On average, we're only spending about $900,000 a year on capital projects, and that is what you've seen for many years now, the annual slurry seal program. We go out with city crews, do the crack filling, cleaning out the cracks, filling the cracks with seal, and then a contractor applies that slurry. The, and I want to mention, actually, before I mention this one, is that the, that we are having a new pavement management system developed, actually a more refined one. We have, through the RTC contracted with the University of Nevada Reno, and they're pavement management experts. We will be using that additional data that was collected, their expertise, of course, at UNR, to develop that new, that new pavement management system. Oops, excuse me. So the primary revenue sources that are used to build and maintain roads in Carson City, there are two funds, two enterprise funds. The RTC fund, the motor fuel tax is the funding source there, it's nine cents per gallon total. And then there's also a street fund, which receives a combination of a motor fuel tax and a quarter cent citywide sales and use tax. Additionally, when you pay for, when you go to the pump and pay for gas, there is a federal gas tax of 18.4 cents, which has not increased since 1993, and a state gas tax, which is 18.455 cents, similar amount. So when you go to the pump, you're paying local, federal, and state fuel taxes. This graph displays the amount of gallons of gas that's sold in Carson City dating back to 2003. As you can see, we peaked in about 2007, and while we've flattened out here, there's not, hasn't been a recent decrease like we experienced from 2007 to 2010, it's relatively flat in the number of gallons that we've sold. And since we have a gallon per gas, gallon gas tax, obviously, we're collecting less in motor fuel tax than we did in previous years when we sold more fuel.
During 2007, when the fuel was up there in those years, did we have sufficient revenue to maintain the roads then to an acceptable standard? I can't remember if you were here then or not, I don't...
No, I'd just gotten here, so that's a fair question. I'd have to go back and look. I mean, I can't claim that we were doing all the projects that we were meant to do, but I can say that you're going to see a slide coming up, that we were able to complete a number of successful projects. And as you'll see in another slide, we did do some work with the Nevada Department of Transportation regarding how much money was going to the Nevada Department of Transportation or not for the, for the maintenance of, or excuse me, for the construction of the freeway. So I don't think there's a, I don't think I can tell you yes, because while we did a lot of work and completed a lot of good projects, there was still deterioration happening around the city.
Patrick, going back one slide to number nine?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, I want to make sure, to get the revenue sources, you can't tap any other sources. This is all, this is the only area where the funds can come from, is that correct? You couldn't tap into the general fund or any, anything else, correct?
No, you could indeed tap into the general fund. An entity could do so.
Pardon me?
Yes, an entity, yes, the city could do that.
We could do it?
Yes.
We could tap into other sources if we wanted?
Yes.
So we're not limited by what is collected here? We're limited by our ability to tap other resources? Would that be correct?
Well, yeah, you're limited by what's available from these funds, and a little later, I'm going to talk about whether or not what's on this slide will change in the future or not. But there is an opportunity to use other funds if that is desired.
And what other funds could we tap?
General fund could be used. I believe that a few years ago, we looked into the, oh, no, we, no, we used that? I don't know, frankly, besides we can use that, besides that?
That's a new question.
Yeah. General fund, yeah.
Just the general fund? Okay.
Unless there was a change in what's before you here.
Okay, so we could tap the general fund. I'm just clarifying, I'm not asking to do that, so. And then on slide 10, although 2007 was a peak year, I mean, we were pretty good during 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008. All of those years, revenue generated was pretty good, and the roads, but we wouldn't have any idea of, I mean, on the earlier slides, we had where the roads were at 61 point something versus 70 being our goal. We have no idea what the roads were back then.
No, we didn't, we didn't have that, that number calculated at that time.
Okay.
And as you're going to see, we, we did not have as many roads in 2007 as we have now as well.
Patrick, just one more question for you, too. The, going back to the mayor's question, the projects that you talked about that we did, those were mostly bond-funded though, right? Those weren't done through the revenue from these?
Yes, that is correct. Many, many of them were bond-funded.
Right.
This one is certainly related to the previous graph, in that you can see the same type of curve related to the fuel tax. It's slightly different that you can see that the, the street maintenance fund is also affected by sales tax. So obviously, there are, there are some differences between RTC and streets funds based on that sales tax difference, but generally speaking, it follows the same pattern. Related to Supervisor Bonkowski's comment, we did build numerous projects with bond funds, and we currently do have a, a bond commitment that requires payments of $1.72 million per year. Of course, bonds do expire, however, it will be 10 years before those payments begin to decline, and as you can see on the screen, it'll go down in 2025, 2029, and then it'll all be expired by fiscal year 2030. I'm not going to, I'm not going to read all these slides, but in summary, the Carson City entered an agreement with the Nevada Department of Transportation in the 90s, which basically involved the implementation of a five-cent motor fuel tax, which is included in the nine cents that was on a previous slide, that was generated, and payments were, were made to the Nevada Department of Transportation to assist in the funding of the freeway. And subsequently, several amendments were enacted, which overall reduced the amount of money, actually stopped the flow of money from the city to the state of Nevada for the completion of the freeway, relieving the city of substantial financial commitments. But in exchange, the city received many miles of large arterial and collector streets that used to be owned by the state of Nevada, which the city is now responsible for maintaining. And that means pavement, signals, striping, plowing, everything related to those roads. And these are basically the biggest roads in town that require, have the most traffic and the most work. I will note on the bottom here, in 2004 is when the Board of Supervisors voted to remove the sunset that was originally included in the five-cent fuel tax. I already discussed the, the transfer of roads, amendments two, and three, included that further transfer of roads. And as it stands today, per the existing agreement and pending future negotiations, when the freeway is completed, the city will, the city still has a $7.2 million obligations to the state of Nevada, which will be paid through three cents of motor fuel tax. This is just a brief list of many, of many significant projects that we have been able to complete. We don't have to run through all of these, but we did reconstruction of Rube Street, the initial construction of North Stewart Street, Curry Street, were some big ones that were indeed bond-funded. And we've had other improvements that have been made throughout the city that do affect that average pavement score. For example, water projects, where the water projects also results in paving of a road. Just some, a few summary points here. We are, we do get calls from numerous citizens. It's not, not any one person. We get calls from numerous people that, that call, so we appreciate it to alert us of problems in the city, we want to be aware of those. But we certainly are aware at the RTC level and also at the staff level, that we do have issues with deteriorating roads, whether it be potholes, or cracking, or what have you. The road, the monies that are collected, that, that small, sales tax and the fuel tax, those are used for roads and to pay for the bonds for previous road projects. They are not used for any other uses, we're not allowed to do so. Some people have the misconception that because we are the capital, we have potentially a special source of funding. That is not correct. We don't have any capital-related funding. And this is an area, this is an issue that's facing many areas. This faces other counties in the, in the state, and other states and other counties across the country are facing this, and even at the national level, there is a shortfall in the fuel tax as well. So this is not a Carson City-specific issue, unfortunately. We are certainly working to maximize the use of the funds available. As I mentioned previously, we are working with UNR to make sure that we involve experts that make sure we're doing the right thing with the funds. For example, we have been doing that slurry project on an annual basis for many years now, but we are starting to question internally whether that is the wisest use of that funding, and that's why we're going to get another opinion. So basically, we have more roads than we used to have, after we accepted them from NDOT by agreement with financial compensation. Our roads are older than they used to be, and unfortunately, with less gallons of gas sold, we have less money to complete that maintenance. Without the additional revenue, with all of our efforts, we do believe the pavement conditions in the city will continue to deteriorate. As I mentioned, there won't be a consistent deterioration, it will vary across different pavements of the city, and, and the deterioration will accelerate as we, as we don't make the I mentioned previously about the legislature. This is very important, possible future for us. In 2013, the legislature passed AB 413, which, which made a huge improvement in the funding down in Clark County. Didn't make any difference for the rest of the state at the time, but it set up fuel tax indexing votes in 2016. One would be a statewide vote to vote on a statewide basis if the state gas tax should be indexed. And just for clarity, indexing means that it goes up every year, typically several cents per year to provide additional funding. And then there would also be a vote in each county to index the county fuel tax. So Clark County's gotten three years of this, but they need a new vote to continue their, to continue their increases. There is some, there are some reservations with the way it's currently set up. So Southern Nevada is currently leading an effort. There is a BDR in right now, the text is not available yet, to make significant changes to that legislation that was previously enacted. And has, certainly has potential consequences for Carson City and other counties of the state, as to whether it would be a county-by-county vote, will there be one vote or two votes? We don't know yet, of course, but it is something we very much want to pay attention to, because as it is now, we have a vote set up for November of, actually, two votes for November of 16 that would be on the ballot in Carson City, and we are very eager to see if there will be any changes to what is planned that would potentially impact us.
Patrick, a couple of questions for you, Patrick. How fast do you anticipate the annual funding need for maintenance to increase based on the accelerated deterioration of the roads? That's the first question that I have.
Well, I'll answer the first one, and I would hesitate to make a guess, because frankly, we've seen the shortcomings in our current pavement management system, and that's why we're building a new one, so I hope to have a better answer for you in the near future. But, but these are definitely millions of dollars numbers, and I can't put a specific item to it, but with a system this large and deterioration the way it's going, whenever we go in and do something, we often end up finding more problems than we, than we found. So I think that our estimate, if anything, is probably on the conservative side, and I think the deterioration will, will be significant. And I apologize for not having a number I can put on it, but, but I don't think we can underestimate the, the size of what we have out there facing us.
So if we make some assumptions, and we assume that we're going to see some sort of gas tax indexing going forward, whether that's 2016 or 2018, and then we have the debt service being paid off in 2025, 2029, and 2030, by the time we get to the 2025 to 2030 time period, and we have an additional $1.7 million annually available to us, do you think that those two revenue sources would provide us the ability to keep up with our annual maintenance? Or is that making a big assumption, because that assumes that we're not going to do any more capital projects or road replacements?
That's, yeah, that's what I was going to mention. That assumes, of course, that we don't bond for anything else as we go forward. So, and if that funding became available to us, a decision would have to be made if you were to do more bonding, or if we were to, you know, spend it as cash as we went. But I certainly believe that if, if we were able to allow those to expire and didn't enter into any new bonds, and we have this significant new funding source, that would be a, that would be a large increase, and I think that we would be in a much better position. And I think that we could, over time, get back to where we are maintaining and not going, going down. But we are talking about a timeframe that's appropriate here, you know, the decade and more level to actually turn the ship and go, start heading in the right direction.
Patrick, can you elaborate on your eight-year cycle for repair?
Certainly. Yes, I mentioned previously the slurry, the slurry seal program that we've been employing on an annual basis. We have a, we have a map, and I don't have it on one of these slides, I was trying, trying to be brief, but we have, do have a map that divides the city into eight portions, and on a rotating basis, we have, we do what we call the crack fill and slurry seal program. We have our own assets that are paid with, with these funds, but our own assets, where our own crews go out, they blow out the cracks, it takes months to do this, to fill in the cracks, and then a contractor comes in typically in summer and does a slurry seal over the top of that. The one for the current fiscal year, we actually started in fall, we only got part of the way through it before it got too cold, and we'll be back in, back in spring when it's warm enough to finish it up. We're still on track to do that. Truthfully, it's an eight-year, it's an eight-year program, but we have not actually been able to do it every year of the last eight years. There were a couple of years that we actually did not have sufficient funding to actually complete the program.
Patrick, do you have any idea of how much per gallon those measures on the board would produce? If this come, if this comes true? I mean, what... If this come, if this comes true, I mean, what is it per gallon that will increase and bring to, to, to RTC?
Yeah, we haven't looked at that in a year or two, but I can, I can give you estimates for sure. The, the amount of the increase, if, there were, there were two kinds of increases, a consumer price index or a producer price index. Pretty much everyone's using the producer price index. Washoe tried doing the first one. It ended up being like .3 cents per gallon. Wasn't much worth it. So the producer price index on average is about three cents per, per gallon per year. So if anybody has been to Washoe County lately, they've had this for several years now, and their gas is noticeably more expensive than it is here in Carson City because it actually has been increasing, and they are reaping the rewards of that. In Carson City, I think a three cent, oh, actually, I can tell you that. I know the five cent gas tax is worth, oh, three cents is worth right around the neighborhood of mil, of a million dollars a year. So, so actually slightly over. So if you got, if you got a, the indexing and start winning with a three cent in the first year, it'd be worth, you know, just over a million dollars. And by the second year, it'd be worth about $2 million. Just to give an example, Clark County got theirs increased, and by law, they can only increase it a total of 10 cents in three years. And for them, that's worth $700 million progressive through the three-year period.
just to back up a step, we've been short since, I mean, we've not had enough revenue, roughly, if I understand the conversation, since 2007. And we've been having a shortfall since 2007?
Well, practically, the shortfall was, existed before then, but we also have the benefit of, you look at how old different parts of town are, we have had, we did have a lot of development that happened, you know, in the, in the, you know, not too distant past where you had roads that didn't need a lot of maintenance. So, so indeed, we could have been doing more before 2007, but now we also have the experience of roads that were maybe built in the 90s that are now experiencing problems that they haven't experienced before, needing maintenance that they haven't needed before.
Even with this, with the new, if the new index comes true and we get the extra pennies coming the other way, with the shortage that we've had through the previous years, we're never going to be able to catch up to get to the point of, of getting the roads back to a better.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say never. I mean, related to Supervisor Boncassi's question, I mean, I don't think this is a, this is definitely not an overnight event. But if you, if you move in the, in the direction of the indexing and, and the bonds, you know, start expiring, you'd have a significant difference where you can start making up ground. And certainly employing the techniques that we're pursuing, the pavement management system with the real, real experts and the right data, we do believe that you can, you can get there at some point. And we also have the advantage that, boy, I think it was 2007, actually, we got the law changed to allow us to use this money for maintenance. I mean, right now, Washoe County's got all that money, and they're not legally allowed to use it for maintenance. So we do have some certain advantages to us. So I don't think it's a, it's a never. I mean, yes, it's a long-term thing, but we certainly have
I take back the word never. I apologize, I apologize. But we're looking at 20, in the year 2030. So, I mean, we're looking quite a few years out ahead to where we're ever going to catch up. So until then, we're still going to be, per se, behind the eight ball, trying to catch up on the road services. And I'm not laboring on that point. I'm just saying, it's going to take a long period of time to get to the point where we get above the grade 70 or 61.1.
Yes, this, this is a slowly moving, large asset. Too late. You already asked me some questions.
Any bonding capacity left on gas?
Nick Providence is shaking his head, so I'm with him.
Other questions to the board? Anybody? Public want to weigh in? Anybody? Paul, want to come up? Good afternoon to you. How's the former sheriff doing today?
City spokesman. My name is Paul McGrath. I live on Ponterosa Drive, south end of town. Been in this community since 1955. Okay. I've been pushing this for quite a while, trying to get some road repairs, especially in my area of town. I'm not too concerned about the rest of the town because I live out there and the other people have the other problems. But since I started this push, I mean, I get a lot of support from the people in town because of the condition of the roads in this community. I mean, you have a heck of a time getting anywhere in this community without going through, you know, cop paths as far as I'm concerned, as far as roads. And this is the capital city. Capital city needs proper roads. And, you know, just by the presentation here, which I already went through once, but he indicated, Patrick indicated, you've got $2.2 million a year that's generated from that nickel gas tax. And that sounds just about what he needs to make sure that the roads are properly repaired. Now, if he just used that money what was originally intended for, the intent of that was to fix the freeway and then it was supposed to sunset. It has nothing in that, in that original agreement to allow that tax to be diverted and put in the RTC fund for every, every other use in the community. Now, when they did that, what they should have done is let the people know because that was a tax that had to be voted on by the people. But when Marv was the mayor, two attempts were made for, for increased gas taxes, and both of them failed. So in the late 90s, I'm sure that, you know, I hate to speak ill of the dead, but I'm sure that Marv had something to do with this. Why don't we just go ahead and, and get this special use tax? And then after a few years, we'll just go ahead and, and figure out how we can divert that for our own use without having to go to the voters. And this is where this tax thing is. And every time I question, ask, why can't you get our roads fixed? We say, we never have any money. Or you're not on the priority list. Now, I don't know how to get on that priority list because in south of town is, that's like the old rural, urban and rural taxation that Carson City had, that if you're in the rural areas, well, your tax rate is lower, but you're not going to get any services. So I think that's probably what we're falling into. My suggestion is, to the board, is that they either have a committee set up or somebody using that nickel gas tax as not as a general revenue for RTC, but as a gas tax to repair our roads. And you can project it out, and if you notify the people in the community, well, when their tax, their roads are going to be fixed and use that money for that, you're not going to get the complaints you have, and I think you're going to get your roads fixed. But when you use that money that's brought in on that special tax, it's used for everything else and nothing else gets done. And my comment is that I suggest that the board do that and use that nickel gas tax what it was originally intended for. And then use your other legislative powers to go ahead and, and make the necessary budget changes because I don't know how much of that money now has been encumbered and used for other things else, but it should be used for road repairs. And I think that you will find the voters will appreciate it very much. Any questions, I mean?
No, Paul, I think there's a couple of questions that, you know, you raised there that I'd like to know the answers to. And one is, my understanding is it's three cents that's going to the state right now.
No, right now, no payments are being made.
No payments.
In, after the completion of the freeway,
Right.
the agreement is that the three, at the, at this time, the three cents would go there. The five cents that is continuing to be collected is actually worth about 1.67 million.
And what are we doing? I mean, Paul raises the question. I mean, what, what are the other, what are the others? I mean, what's the RTC using the funds for right now?
Well, and they're not, they're not separated from the other four cents that we collect, but the RTC funds that are collected, including that five cents, are used, number one, to pay those bonds. Those bonds actually are slightly more than is collected with the five cents, which leaves us, the other four cents, which are used to fix roads. They are used to, they're used to pay for that slurry seal program. They're used to pay for the crack filling. They're used to pay for street signals. They're used to pay for striping, both the crosswalks.
Any of it used for jack?
No, we absolutely cannot use it for jack.
Okay. Any of it, does the RTC get general funding as well? General funds?
No. RTC does not receive general funds. The only other contract that we do normally is the long-line striping contract, which we absolutely must do to keep our
Can the funds be used anywhere in the city?
No, they cannot. They can only be used for, for fixing roads.
Okay. But I mean, can the gas tax monies be used for roads anywhere in the city?
Yes, yes, they can be used for roads anywhere in the city per the ordinance that was adopted.
When was that ordinance?
Originally, there are several dates on the bottom, but going back to 77, 81, 97, 2004, it's 11.20.050. It specifically states that it can be used on any arterial collector roadway or alternative route related to the movement of traffic through Carson City.
Okay. And I got, I got, I'll call him the sheriff because I grew up with him as a call him the sheriff, so.
It's all right. I'll talk to your brother.
He, if you're looking in Paul's area out there, I mean, how, there's an eight, there's the, you have a, you have a maintenance plan that goes through the city, right? Okay. When, when do they expect, where are they on that maintenance plan? Just for example, I mean, because I know that there are other people who are concerned about roads as well. Where, where's southeast Carson City?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have the specific year. They have not been, they have not received it in several years, and I still think that they're a couple of years out as Supervisor Bowden mentioned, it's an eight-year cycle. And indeed, there were a couple of years we missed which pushed it all back. So indeed, there is, they are not scheduled to have maintenance use this year, I can tell you that. And I'd be happy to fear which year it is, but I think it's still, still a couple of years into the cycle. And, and as I mentioned, as part of that work we're doing with UNR, we're working to determine if that even is the wisest use because that specific treatment is only one of many options available to us. And there comes a point where that is no longer an effective maintenance strategy because the roads are, are beyond the point where that's useful.
I got to add something to it, Patrick, if you don't mind. When I did start inquiring and complaining to the Public Works Department about the roads, he was nice enough, he hand-delivered a letter to me that my, that my area was not in, in the priority zone, and that he would let me know when, when money would be available. So, you know, that's still a question I needed to ask, you know, when's the money available to get that fixed? And I'm not speaking just for myself. Everybody in my area where I live, I mean, had some devastating problems, especially when you get a lot of wet weather. I mean, the ditches out there and the drainage is really poor, and a lot of it has contributed to the freeway where this money was intended to be used for. This five cents was to be used for any connecting roads, arterials leading to or from, or to the freeway. And if, when you divert that money and put it someplace else, the maintenance that's been required anywhere in town, not just where I live, but anywhere in town, it's, it's not going to happen unless you look at another revenue source. Jim, sorry.
Going back to what the mayor was asking, the revenue generated, if I believe I heard you correctly, it was four cents that, that goes to the
Well, there's, there's a total of nine cents that's collected to the RTC fund.
Okay.
And, and there's the five cents that is, was originally intended for the freeway, and then there's four additional cents.
So four cents is generated for street improvement? Is that?
No, nine cents, nine cents is generated for street improvement, and, and that's what it's being used for. It's not going to the freeway.
Then where's the five cents going that Paul's referring to?
It's part of the nine cents, I think. To the streets. That's the
Okay, so all nine cents generated and, okay. How much does that bring yearly? Or this is past year? A million?
Well, no, I'm going to go back to the, the five cents brings in 1.67. It's right here on the graph. Let's see, the RTC, it's $3 million. Nine cents is $3 million.
We get $3 million a year, correct?
Yes, for the RTC in addition to the
And we're short, even with 3 million, we're still short, correct?
The priority is, is what are you using the money for? In other words, the money was brought in for the purpose of fixing those roads, but it's used for everything else. And somebody has a special project on the board, or you've got something you want to get done, and RTC money is used, that's that nickel that's supposed to go for road repairs going to something else.
Okay. I, I, this is what I want to clarify. Maybe I'm trying to get there the long way, but if you could clarify what Paul just said, is it being used for something else?
No, sir.
The five cents is not?
Nope. It can only be used for roads.
Okay. Maybe the question should be asked is, a connector or connecting rotor or arterial to the freeway, is that considered Curry Street, Division Street? These are the things, you know, that money was allocated for certain things for that freeway, nothing else other than the freeway. And when you can combine Carson Street or you combine Division Street, Curry Street was a big project, that money was, that nickel was used for that and not for what it was intended for.
Okay. I don't know what that nickel was used for as you described, but I'm intending to look at staff and, for the answer.
Well, indeed, as we indicated, they were only used for roads, and indeed, that did go to Curry. And now it goes to streets like Stewart Street, which are now city-owned roads that didn't used to be, and College Parkway and Airport Road, and I will list them all, but it does go to all of those roads, which is part of our deal with Endot. We don't give them the five cents anymore. Instead, we use it to maintain all of those roads regardless of where they are in the city.
If I could jump in there for just a second.
And I'm going back to Paul. Sorry. Still got it. I'm going back to Paul, and does that answer your question?
No, no. I still want my street
So we're at an impasse, maybe.
I'm still, I'm still want the streets repaired, not just for my area, but in town. Any place where the freeway has been involved or impacted the community, that money should be used for that and not used for everything else in town.
Paul, I think what staff is telling us is that they are using it in the appropriate method. They're using it for streets. Bear with me.
Okay, I'm with you.
Unfortunately, and I live in your area too, down that way, we're kind of years away from getting the street upgraded because of the various reasons. I, I think, if I'm understanding what staff is responding to your inquiries, they are using the funds in the proper method as they should be used. I, I want to make sure that you're clear on that.
I disagree with you, but I mean, that's, you know, that's your opinion, and I, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
It's still not mine because that's, the roads aren't still getting repaired, and they should be. They've had a decade. Now, you're talking about a decade. We're talking over $20 million that's been collected on that nickel gas tax for road services.
And I can only go along with what staff is telling me because I, I don't know where else to turn to help you find the answers, so.
You know, and, and probably the staff here wasn't in Carson City or wasn't involved in the roads at the time that, that I was living here and when this thing was passed. You know, I thought to myself, boy, when this thing's passed, I said, how did Marv do that? Because I used to be in budgets when I was on the highway patrol, and any road use tax had to have state approval. So they come up with this special tax, Las Vegas did, because of their expansion, say, if you have a specific area you want to put this money, you know, we can, the county can go ahead and authorize these taxes. Okay? So Carson City, oh, that's a good idea. We'll just go ahead and make it, make sure that the freeway gets done. And Marvin really touted this. I got this nickel gas tag through, you know, and we're going to go ahead and get the freeway started just because we got that gas tax. Well, that's, you know, the community bought it and hook, line, and sinker, but then they didn't let it go through and fix the roads that they're supposed to before they, after they stopped giving money to the state. So that's why I'm not satisfied with with your scenario.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. And
When, when you look at the revenue and the expenses involved here, the nine cent gas tax creates about approximately $3 million a year. Of that $3 million a year, approximately 2.7 million of it goes towards the debt service on the bonds and the slurry seal program. So that only leaves $300,000 a year approximately to cover all other road repairs and maintenance, correct?
Right. And there is the streets fund as well, but which, but like I said, there is a, a long list of signals, striping, like.
Right. And, and in two years, we're going to lose approximately a million dollars of what we currently have because three cents of the nine cents is going to be paid to the state when the freeway is completed in 2017. So the situation's going to get worse before it gets better. And unless we have the gas tax indexing, it's going to be a longer period of time before we can turn this ship around. Otherwise, we really need to wait until the debt service is paid off. So it's going to be a long process unless we figure out another way to create more funding. But until we get more funding, we can't solve the problem. can't solve the problem.
I'm just going to speak for myself. I think that if, if you properly propose an increase in the gas taxes to the citizens in this community, map it out as to what's going to be repaired and when, and use, and then figure out how much it's going to cost you to do this over, you said an eight-year period, do it in an eight-year period. You can start south of town, if I don't mind, on this suggestion, and, and let the people know what they're going, what, what they can expect. They'll approve that tax for you. And I say again, I'm just speaking for myself, but the number of comments that I've received since this thing got on board is that people are willing to pay for it if you show them what they're paying for. And this, this roundabout get in the back doorway as far as that tax increase and that nickel, that really makes people upset.
And Paul, I think that the citizens, the voters are going to have that opportunity in 2016, because I think you're going to see this on the ballot. So we'll, we'll see if your prediction is right.
And maybe we'll have a battle cry of, you know, remember the tax of two thousand and four, and see what happens. You know, people will remember that, that they got slighted on it. And that's my opinion, if that's what, what the Board of Supervisor and the RTC did to the community, is that you did, you got the tax on, you couldn't get it the right way, so you took it through the back door. Anyway, that's, that's my comment, unless you have any questions for me.
So, so I guess, kind of in a nutshell, Paul, the, as, as I understand it, the last amendment, or end amendment to the agreement we have with Endot, essentially, I, I think it was reported in the paper during one of the articles, we talked about this issue, allows you to, it's your opinion that that allows, that last amendment allows you to use the five cents or any portion of it we get for streets anywhere in our community, essentially.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that right? And Paul disagrees with that. I mean, he either disagrees with that or says that the Board ought to go back and revisit that issue in, in some manner or fashion. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, as, as long as you use that five cents for, for road repairs, and again...
Okay, but the, but the issue, though, I think goes to, goes, because I think right now, unless I'm missing it, the five cents is going to road repairs.
Yeah, but now, what it was originally intended for.
Right, I mean, you're, you're saying that it, that it should go to particular roads only, and, you know, what, what the staff is saying, that their understanding of the agreement is it can be, that gas tax can be used anywhere in the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand that. And then, and you did that through ordinance already.
Right, right.
See, you did that through ordinance, you diverted it. And that's where the, the bugaboo is, is that you diverted that money for what it was originally intended for, for use as quote unquote, in the slush fund for the road repairs throughout the city. Otherwise, you wouldn't have gotten it through.
Okay, so, so, and then what you're saying is if we, suppose we hypothetically went back and said, okay, we're not going to use those funds, that nickel, or any portion of it, for roads anywhere other than...
What is intended for.
Well, wait a minute. I mean, we could look at what, what was intended for or not, but I'm saying right next to the freeway, or certain roads there.
Right.
Do you, what's your solution to the shortfall that we're already incurring for the rest of the community?
Well, you know, we've got a problem. I understand that this community has grown considerably since I've been here, and, you know, and it's something that we never planned for, I should say, we, the city had never planned for, to, to develop, you know, future road repairs or road maintenance programs within the city because of our growth. And, you know, you need to, if, if the city would just go out to the community saying, this is what our problem is, and say, this is what we'll do, but you need to help us by increasing your road tax, I think they would go along with it and set up an eight-year plan.
I got you. Okay, thanks, Paul. Sheriff, thanks.
Thank you.
By the way, when were you sheriff? Come on.
I've forgotten, it's been so long. You know, I'm seventy years old now, and, you know, it...
Come on. When was it really?
I was elected in, I forgot, no, eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven, right.
Eighty-seven to ninety-five.
All right, Paul, thanks. All right, all right. Anybody, any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any. Any further board comments? Anybody? All right, we ready to move off this item and go on to the next item? Okay, thanks to everyone for a good, good conversation this afternoon. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. All right. We ready then to move on to...
We, we are, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna, we're gonna bring up the brief here, if you could just give me one moment. I'm going to ask Rishi Mahautra to come up. He's going to brief our proposed lean management plan. If you see in the agenda item, I've got a dollar amount of fifty thousand dollars. That also includes some expenses. The base amount is forty-eight thousand, but it'll also include additional expenses. That's where that number came from. So as soon as Rishi is ready, you can either...
We'll just stand in place right here. Stand at ease.
I see the sheriff and Kathy came back in. It must be getting serious.
Huh? Go ahead, you ready or not? Fix it up. Go ahead.
No, you gotta push the button. You gotta push the button.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rishi, you ready to go?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the Board for letting me present today. My name is Rishi. I work with Moss Adams, and I have eighteen years of lean and Six Sigma experience. I started with a tractor company in India, and when I came here, I was very lucky. One of the professors kind of adopted me, and I was helping companies in the state of Oklahoma at that time with lean. So, and I have been in Reno, in Nevada from, since two thousand, and have helped a lot of companies and organizations with the lean initiative, running, improving the efficiencies, and helping them be more efficient. So the agenda, the overview, just a brief introduction to lean, introduction to Kaizen. We'll introduce, you know, some basic tools, the foundational tools for lean, and just a small, you know, some details of the, of the program, what we have proposed. The key participants from Carson City, the program sponsor is the city manager, Nick, and program coordinator is Michael Solago. And we'll, we'll be working very closely with each other for this program. The current phase, phase one, this is what is being proposed, we'll be conducting Kaizen events, and I will go into what Kaizen events are, but they are, in, in more detail, but primarily, they are continuous improvement events, which are very hands-on, and they have an immediate ROI, return on investment. And typically, in, in lean projects, we see one, one to, one is to four to one is to six return on investment. And what we are doing here is, we have identified some leaders in Carson City, and we'll be training them with the lean methodology, with the Kaizen methodology, so that once we are done with the training, and it's not just training, we will be using Carson City processes to improve. So we will be using these processes, which we identified by, by the city, in conjunction with, with the leaders, and we will have hands-on experience on how to run Kaizen events, and how to get that ROI, how to be more efficient. The next phase would be the green belt certification for these leaders. What that means is, these are, these are the advanced tools which the leaders would know, the, the various department leaders would know, so that they can further improve, get on the efficiencies, get in the efficiencies at the city. Any question? Okay, I'm sorry. So what is lean? This is my favorite, I'm sorry. What is lean? Difference between lean and Six Sigma? Primarily in lean, we attack, we attack waste, and in Six Sigma, we, it's war on variation. For example, if we were to take the example of roads, how do we repair the roads more efficiently? You know, instead of taking twenty days, how, how do we do that in nineteen days or in fifteen days? That would be a lean example. But to make that road always, you know, twenty feet wide, and not twenty point, you know, twenty, not twenty point five feet wide or nineteen point five wide, that would be more of a, of a Six Sigma example. So how do you make a road which is always ten feet long and not, you know, plus minus anything would be, would be Six Sigma? And why lean is more popular is, lean is more common sense, while a lot of math is involved in Six Sigma, and which is not easy for everyone. Lot of data analysis, lot of math, lot of graphs, charts. So, so that's why lean has, is more popular than Six Sigma, and that is what we would be using. So what is lean? It's a systematic approach to eliminate waste through continuous improvement by flowing the product or service at the pull of the customer in pursuit of perfection. Yes, a technical, you know, definition, but the, the basic aim is that we are focusing on the customer, whether that's internal or external. Internal would be within the company, within the city. External would be the people living here. Only when there is a demand for that, that is when that product or service is generated, not before or not after. It's to maximize the value, and that is what is, the value is as defined by the customer. If the customer wants better roads, that's what we focus on. So that is, that is where we are focusing on maximizing the value for the customer. And the goal is to provide perfection, you know, to create the zero waste process. How do you have, eliminate waste so that we can keep improving day after day, and, you know, so on. The lean principles, I will, I was working at, you know, one of the companies in Reno, and I'll use that as an example to, to explain the cycle, and this was Dell, actually, Dell Computers, and they have an amazing supply chain where, in the olden days, you, you could order a custom laptop. They were not available, you know, any, a Dell product was not available in, in, in a retail store. You could only order online, and as soon as you ordered a Dell laptop, you would, actually, they would be made in Malaysia. That, that, you know, within the six hours, flown to Oakland the same night, and it would come, it would be trucked to Reno, to Reno by, you know, six, six o'clock in the morning, and there, you know, someone may have ordered a, two laptops, a mice, you know, a mouse, some different software, monitors, printers, so all that would be kitted and shipped to the customer by the evening. So we had a supply chain working throughout, you know, around the world, and the customer had the laptop within four days. And how they did that was, first they identified the value, and the way that they did that is, they had no idea, you know, what value does Dell provide. So they asked the customers, they did about a four or five month survey, what value do we as a customer really provide to you? And one of the things was on-time delivery, a custom product which was delivered on time within three or four days. And there were two or three other things that were identified. So after that, you know, we had...
Help, help me understand. I got that from the, in the business community, the example you gave. Help me understand that in terms of the rendition of public service. Identify the, take a value that, and identify that. Identify a service, put a value on it, and then tell me how you go about doing that. Like, for example, how you put a value on paramedic service?
So value does not mean a, a dollar value. What does the customer find valuable?
Okay, how, how do you determine that, Rishi?
At Dell, we did that through the surveys. We actually contacted the customer and said, you know, we don't know what is valuable, why don't you tell us? And that is, and it was a process, it took about four or five months, but we said, you know, we don't know. We think we know, but, you know, you are the customer, we are serving you, so why don't, you know, you tell us? So we, we did a customer survey, and that is how we, for us, maybe, you know, the black laptop, small, is better, which may not really be valuable.
And, and city manager, if I'm stepping on your toes, you like...
No, no, I was just gonna, I think I was gonna help Rishi. A, a value for paramedic, paramedic service could be a response time, based on a call.
Okay.
That could be the value to the customer.
Yeah, I got that, and I'm not going to, just kind of a final question, I just want to get this in my mind here. How many services would you look at for forty-eight thousand plus two thousand dollars? How many discrete services would you look at to, to identify a value?
So we will be doing Kaizen events.
Okay.
And they will be identified with the help of Nick.
Okay.
And we have some examples in a later on slide.
All right, all right. Jumping ahead, I'm sorry. Jim, I'm sorry, I thought...
Maybe I'm jumping ahead, too, but you mentioned customer survey, and, and what do you mean by that? You would be contacting citizens for their survey as to what's important to them?
So, so I'm just discussing the principles of lean. For this project, we will not be contacting the customer, the citizens of the, of Carson City. I'm just going through the basic principles of lean, you know, how this would, you know, we would typically do this, but for the Kaizen events, we would not be.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So once we identified value at, at this, we identified the streams that provide that value, maybe the four or five facilities where we, you know, provide that value to the customer. So we mapped the value stream, and we will be doing this in Carson City. We will be mapping all the, the value streams where, you know, we'll first do a, a value stream map, the high level, and identify the pain points, and then from those choose which, where do we get the biggest bang for the buck. So once that has been done, we will create flow. Okay, so in the case of Dell, we had four facilities which provide the same value, but we're following different processes. So without doing any lean, without doing any Six Sigma, without doing anything, we know one process is better than the other. So just adopting that, in, in the other three facilities, we start make, we start to make more money, try to eliminate waste. And once we do that, we say, okay, now we can further improve, and start eliminating waste to create flow. And one of the things we do when you're creating flow, establish the pull system instead of the push system. What that means is, we are acting on the demand of the customer. When the customer wants something, that's when we provide it. Not early, not late, that's exactly when the customer pulls, is when we act. And after that, we do the, we continuously improve, that's the PDCA. We have planned it, we have done it, or we are doing it, then we take a step back and see, are we really in, in the, in the right mode? Have we done it correctly? What all corrections do we need to make? And then act on it again, to make sure we are eliminating all that. We said we are eliminating, getting to the perfect quality scenario. Of course, this is a continuous improvement cycle. We'll never get to, you know, a hundred percent quality, and, but the aim is that, and that's what the PD cycle is, to continuously improve. Bold steps versus small steps. The lean philosophy is to work with small steps, and why that is, is that, let's say if the green line is, is the target, what you're trying, what we are trying to achieve, and this, these stairs are, you know, things looking like a stairs, that's the, the continuous, in a small... things looking like a stairs, that's the, the continuous, in a small steps, uh, make a change, make it better, uh, again, you know, change the next thing, make it better, uh, you so on and so forth. Uh, in time, you know, all, there's always a, a slide back, you slide back, uh, whenever there's a change, you, you aim for, you know, uh, uh, you know, a perfect, uh, ten score, but you always, you know, you may change, but because there's always resistance to change, you slide back a little and in, in small steps, it's easy to correct that. And what happens is the, the blue shaded portion, in, in a bold step, you know, you aim for the, for the big thing, in, in, in three years, we'll, you know, do X, Y, Z, you know, plug the switch on and we always, almost always never get to the target, we are always at a lower level. So this, the blue thing, uh, there is the efficiency we lose, the benefit we lose throughout if we do one bold step versus many small continuous steps. So that is why, uh, the, the lean methodology is the continuous improvement. We do it every day, we, uh, we continuously improve, uh, so that we don't slide back and we gain the benefits, um, that otherwise we would not using one bold step. Uh, one example I always ask is, you know, how, how does everyone come to work today? Or how did everyone come to the meeting today? And, uh, we use a lot of roads, you know, we use signs, one-way streets, uh, traffic signals, all these things are signals, are visual factory tools which we say, which make us safe. Uh, and, you know, I've seen quite a few companies where they don't use these at all and for example, someone coming to fill a form and they suddenly start, you highlight, they start highlighting, could you fill this part, this part, this part, this part? Again, every time a form is being filled, an employee is spending ten seconds, fifteen seconds, uh, two, three or four minutes to explain how to fill a form. And if you design the form effectively, you don't need to do that, you know, the form is here, you know, please fill it and give it, give it to me when it's done. And of course, they better, you know, you could do it online and there are many other things, but almost always, they start highlighting with a highlighter, of course, the cost of a highlighter, uh, these employees are taking time, there are long lines there. Uh, and in all these cases, when, in this particular example, you know, we surveyed the customers of this company and of course, they do not, do not expect the long line, they want immediate service and here we are spending time, uh, trying to do all these things, again, wasting time, uh, which, again, from a city standpoint or of a, a company standpoint, we have to employ more people now to reduce those lines. So how do we make these things better? We use creativity before capital, that's the lean theme. Uh, everyone says that, uh, the, our people are the biggest asset and most of the people do not, uh, use the, their, uh, most of the companies and organizations do not use the creativity of their employees. So the focus of lean is to use the creativity, uh, of their employees, uh, before capital. So it should be a, a low capital intensive program, uh, which is very visual and which is one, which is devoid of waste. Uh, the, the phrase, you know, traditional versus lean, the one which I like the most is, uh, traditionally, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, i- is, is, uh, is what traditionally happens and, and the lean theme is, you know, if it ain't broke, make it better. Uh, and that is what we can, continuously strive to do. And the other thing is it encourages problem exposure. Uh, if we hide problems, we will never be able to solve them. And, uh, so the idea is to make it ugly. We want to, want everyone to bring the problems so that we can solve them. If we don't make it ugly, if we don't expose waste, if we don't expose these problems, they'll never be solved. So, so in lean thinking, we, all the, all these things are encouraged, instead of hiding problems or, or fear or all these things, we encourage, uh, all, uh, you know, problem exposure. Um, again, you know, single piece versus batch production, this is another key element of lean, uh, where instead of waiting for, for Monday to come or if we are waiting for, um, you know, uh, the monthly meeting for things to happen, we take things, uh, take care of things one at a time and let's move forward. We've got a form, it needs approval, let's do it now, instead of waiting for, uh, Monday or something, then I fall sick, those things don't happen. So if something needs to happen, we take care of it from a single, uh, you know, piece flow standpoint, whether this is services or manufacturing, uh, this has helped reduce lead time. Uh, for example, in, instead of customers waiting for, for a month, for any decision or for service or for a product, uh, they get it as and when it's needed. So, uh, these are primary differences, you know, visual encouraging, encourages problem exposure and, you know, if it ain't broke, make it better. Uh, so difference between value add and non-value add as defined in lean, uh, value add is something what the customer is willing to pay for and, and that is how value added is, is, uh, is defined and something which changes fit form or function. Uh, everything else is, is, uh, non-value added and, uh, termed as waste in, in lean and we try and eliminate, uh, that waste. For example, if you were to drill a hole, I'm sure there are many road examples which we can give, but, uh, if you have to drill a hole, uh, you have to get a drill, then you have to put the bit in it and then you make a hole in it. Uh, the value added portion was just that hole which you made, getting the drill, you know, putting the drill bit, all those things are non-value added. So we try and eliminate these things, these are, you know, in, in the maintenance, fleet maintenance department, for example, uh, these are things we will be looking at, how can we, you know, I'm told there's big, big, uh, big backlog and things like that, how can we eliminate these things so that, you know, without, uh, without, you know, hiring, you know, buying, you know, fifty million dollar robots, how can we make sure we are on time, uh, without waste, uh, and be efficient? So, non-value added typically, I've done, uh, this analysis, it's typically, you know, I've done, uh, found companies with less than one percent value add. Uh, typically, companies are at five percent, uh, sixty percent is about a non-value add, which we try and eliminate. Uh, non-value add but necessary, we still need to, you know, get the drill, but should we get it from, you know, fifty feet or, you know, walk and get, get from fifty feet or should we just keep it at our desk? And if there's too much clutter, uh, on our desk, could we have two levels where, you know, we have one or two shelves in front of us where we can keep that drill so that we don't have to walk fifty feet to get that? So, you know, uh, getting the drill is, is necessary, you know, you have to hold the drill, but how can you minimize, uh, that action, that non-value added action? And of course, we try and improve on the value added portion. Uh, benefits of lean, uh, uh, it increases productivity and morale, uh, seeing these in farms and nurseries I've worked and, in defense, uh, where we have done, we have done some, uh, with Cal recycle, uh, the, the tire recycle program, uh, it, it increases productivity and morale and, and that is, uh, what is the most important thing, you know, uh, from a, a chemical company I was working with, uh, thirty million dollars, a small company, we are able to save, save them, uh, about a million dollars a year. Uh, and, and, you know, many such examples, uh, but increasing productivity, uh, and morale is the key, reducing cycle times, overtime goes down quite a lot. Uh, you know, it frees up capital, working capital, it frees, frees that up. It is about continuous improvement and workforce, uh, workforce development. Um, so, uh, the throughput, for example, again, uh, in a lot of the services, the throughput will increase, uh, when we, uh, when they go through a lean exercise. Throughput meaning, uh, what, whether they provide a service, produce a product, whatever that thing is, if they're doing that in, you know, ten days, it would now take, you know, five days after a lean initiative. And that was just as an example. Uh, so what we do in lean is try and eliminate the wastes and that's downtime, the acronym. Uh, defects, everyone knows what, you know, those are, whether it's in manufacturing or in services, filling wrong, wrong forms. Uh, I have called for quite a few services over the phone, you know, credit cards, phone and for some reason, uh, comments are never get captured, uh, there, there are quite a few things that could be changed. Overproduction is, uh, is producing ahead of time and producing more than what is required. Uh, phones, for example, would be obsolete, you know, if you, in, in one month. Uh, waiting is employees waiting or machinery waiting or equipment waiting. Uh, non-value added processing is something you, you'll be producing, uh, doing something in twenty steps instead of ten. Uh, customer wanting a B finish and we're, uh, giving an A finish just because we think they want it. Uh, transportation is. That's moving of information, whether move, information of goods, uh, all that is transportation, why should that be done? Uh, if it is not necessary, inventory, of course, uh, uh, it's multiple data, you know, having multiple databases, having stacks of forms which will get, get obsolete, uh, next year. Uh, inventory, of course, finished goods, uh, work in progress, all these things. Motion is, is, uh, the, the space of an employee, how effectively is an employee being, being utilized or is using the, uh, the, uh, the workplace. Uh, it includes walking that twenty feet to get the drill, you know, why? And employee, you know, this is, uh, under utilization of, of, uh, of an employee's mental abilities. Uh, so I, for example, was working at an electronic company, uh, my background is in mechanical and industrial engineering and I was programming ICs, uh, chips, integrated circuits, of course, that's, that is, uh, under, under utilization of my skills. So these are the wastes we will be looking at during the Kaizen events and trying to eliminate these things. You know, the aim is to get it right the first time. Uh, some examples, challenges at Carson City, for example, the payroll process, uh, this was, Mr. Mayor, I think one of your questions, uh, very manual and requires multiple approvals. Uh, how can you move this process faster? I think this process probably impacts everyone at Carson City. Uh, the accounts, uh, payable process, you know, very labor intensive. Uh, again, these are just examples, I do not know, you know, uh, what the team would come up with as the final set of, of the problems we'll be attacking. Uh, but, uh, the contracts, uh, process is very manual, uh, the ma, the fleet maintenance, I think is, uh, the number which I know is about two hundred and forty dollars an hour, uh, which is, which is very expensive, uh, from an hourly rate standpoint, uh, how can you, how can we reduce that? And I think some simple things if we do, uh, in other, and I'll show you some pictures, but if you do some simple things, we, you know, you, there's a, there'll be a direct impact, uh, you know, even if it is, you know, ten percent, uh, I think it, you know, we can have a bigger impact. Uh, again, at this point, I, you know, I'm not, uh, you know, I'm guessing at this point, but even at, at ten percent, I think this will be a very big ROI, uh, you know, for the city. Uh, the online functionality, for example, that is offered to the community is limited, uh, variations exist between different sites. So all these things, uh, are examples of challenges which can be, uh, solved with lean and lean being very hands-on, it, it's not a report, uh, that would go out, we would actually take care of these things. Uh, and there's no, you know, a thousand-page report and that, it, this should be done. Uh, you know, these things will be done once, uh, you know, after Kaizen event. Introduction to Kaizen. It, it's, it's a Japanese, uh, uh, Japanese word, Kai, meaning change for the, and Zen for the better, uh, started after World War Two. Uh, and a lot of people think that Kaizens and, you know, lean applies to operations, uh, but this applies to office as well as, you know, front office, back office, operations, manufacturing, warehousing, supply chain, uh, profit organization, non-for-profit, all these, uh, all these companies. Uh, and it's a systematic way to, to reduce waste. So, uh, well, benefits of Kaizen, uh, of a Kaizen culture, it reduces waste, uh, space utilization, which in all the companies have been to, you know, they are, they always want a bigger building, a bigger office, uh, so how do we, uh, improve the space utilization? Uh, it gives immediate results, we are not waiting for ten years to get a result, we see immediate results. Uh, it makes the customer happy and it creates a very smart working environment. People come back to, you know, to a lean environment, you know, I want my surroundings clean, I want my, uh, things to be efficient. I come to work, uh, to produce, I don't, you know, before coming to work, hey, I'm gonna mess up today. We, no one comes to work that way, so, so lean provides that environment, uh, a, a smart working environment. So what is a Kaizen event? At that level, you know, we'll be, we'll have a training session, one or two hours, depending on, on the, on the process so that people are familiar with the tools. Uh, we will create an ASIS map, I'll show a picture of that after, uh, you know, I think after this. We populate the map with relevant data. What that means is if you're looking at reducing the, uh, the time to repair for the, uh, for the fleet maintenance, we will jot down, you know, this process takes so much time, this process takes so much time in the, in the current state map. Uh, we identify the pain points, what are the pains? You know, besides pain, uh, you know, we always run out of parts or, you know, the permission takes too long or, you know, whatever those pain points are being, are being felt by the employees, we'll document those, uh, then we walk the process, uh, the GEMBA walk, uh, against a Japanese term for GEMBA, meaning, uh, the scene of the crime. Uh, and in lean, uh, crime being defined as where waste is occurring. So if something that is, you know, uh, uh, taking ten days instead of, instead of two, so that's waste, uh, which we'll be attacking. So in this case, instead of the operators or the, the doers coming to management, for example, and saying, hey, can you help us, it's the other way around, it, we, if, when we'll be doing this, for example, that in, in the fleet maintenance, we won't be doing this in the round, uh, in an office, we'll be actually working in the facilities where the crime, the, the waste is taking place. So that is what GEMBA is, you know, working at the scene of the crime to eliminate that waste and, and crime being defined as, as waste again, you know, place where the waste is being generated. Uh, we finalize the map, uh, finalize the ASIS map, we create a future map, okay, we know where we are. Uh, for example, if I, if we need to go to New York, we need to, and I'm asking for someone for directions, uh, they need to know where I am. I may be in Carson, I may be in Reno, I may be in LA, I may already be in, in New Jersey. So, uh, so you need to know where you are to actually, to, to go, uh, to be at some other place. So the, to set the baseline, that's where the current state map is, the ASIS map and then after that, after the pain points, data collection, uh, we do the future state, that's how the process should look like, after as much waste we could eliminate. And so once we do that, we create the future state map, uh, we populate the map with data. Again, if it was time, you would say the current state map, uh, the current, in the current state, it takes ten days. In the future state, we'll add all the data up and say, okay, you know, data points up and say that, okay, now it's gonna take two days. Uh, then we create an effort impact chart, uh, it, it has four quadrants, uh, high effort, low effort, uh, high impact, low impact and all the low hanging fruits, we try and get those things implemented during the Kaizen event. And for the ones which are gonna take some more time, an IT change, for example, would be one, which is not gonna happen overnight, which will require some permissions, for example, and that will take, that will be put on a roadmap for improvement and of course, we create the closing presentation and things like that. Uh, this is a Kaizen event in progress. This is, the, the room in the, in the picture is, is a little bit bigger than this room and, and you'll see the involvement of the people. The biggest thing is, you know, I can tell someone, hey, you do this, uh, you know, uh, you do something different from tomorrow, the guy's not gonna listen to me. Uh, but if he's involved in the change process, the likelihood of the, that person adopting that change is, is, is a lot more. So we are actually working with the people who will be impacted by the change. Uh, in this case, uh, the, uh, so again, if you see, everybody is very active, these are discussions going on, uh, how should the new process be and, you know, how do you do it? And a lot of times we find is, uh, one process is being done differently by, by two or three people. So it's, it's a very good discussion that you do it that way, no, you are wrong and then it's, no, I'm wrong and we should do it that way. Uh, these things generate, against very visual and everyone can see the, uh, see the process on the wall and, you know, this is a more, uh, close-up, the, the yellow sticky is on the wall. Again, this is, uh, this is butcher paper, so we don't dirty the walls, the blue is the, the tape, uh, to stick the paper on the wall. Uh, the yellow is the process map, uh, that's the current straight process map there and the blue are the pain points identified by the employees and the red ones are the assumptions we are making. We may not know the answer to that question, you know, someone may have raised, hey, you know, I'll find out from Nick tomorrow and I'll get back to you. So we write that down there, uh, so we make sure we don't forget to ask Nick or whoever that person would be in this case. So again, these, these maps were for one process were all over the wall, uh, all over the four sides and the aim is to look into, uh, every detail so that. And the aim is to look into every detail so that we can identify the waste and eliminate it. And usually, the, the current state map is a lot bigger than the future state because you have eliminated a lot of waste and those kind of things. Introduction to a few tools, Kaizen events, I mean, five S. This is sort, shine, straighten, standardize, and sustain. Simple, five S exercises is primarily a workplace organization in, in simple terms. And, and the sort, these five S's, that's why it's called five S. This is a foundational tool and just implementing five S at companies, at organizations, we have seen about a 15 to 20% increase, at least, in productivity. At a nursery where we, where we were doing these, these guys are, again, a 30 million, from a nursery standpoint, they're a big size, they ship blueberry plants all, all over the world. In this case, their maintenance department, for example, was taking about two hours to find what they need. Again, the three huge different fields, they have lots of tools, all these kind of things. To find something, these guys were taking about, about two hours and then they, they spent half an hour actually trying to do the thing. And this is true literally in, you know, similar scenarios are true for literally all the organizations I've been to. And in this case, one guy actually retired and, and left. And after the five S, you know, with one less person, so it's a team of 10, I think, they were more productive, they got more of the projects done and in a lot fast, short, in a short amount of time. So again, five S, does it apply to farms and, and maintenance only? No, to office as well. And the, these, this is from, from last year, from 2014, where people were complaining about the productivity and overtime and things like that. And I said, well, you know, why don't you take me to your office? And this is what I saw. Of course, you will not be as productive as you could be. And if you did do five S in your facility, you'd be a lot more productive and you'd not have complaints about overtime and, you know, the mental breakdowns and things like that. Same, same company, pictures taken 2004. On the top left picture, you will notice that they have books from, the handbooks from, are from 2011 and 2012. And the year is 2014. What that tells me is, these people again are looking at old books. Again, they're not five S, they're operations, you know, they're offices. And they probably are having quality issues as well. They are, you know, they're referring to old manuals, old rules and regulations, whatever the handbook has. So, you know, if, if they five S their office, they will definitely be more productive, their quality will increase, and they'll be more efficient. This is the, the office, the, so that was an office example, this is probably, you know, something in, in the fleet maintenance, for example. This is the current state of the, of the maintenance shop, nothing is labeled, these people actually spend about half an hour finding the keys every day. Just the keys. This is a future state, they know where everything is going, where everything should go, and where, whoever works, you know, it's, it's labeled where things should go back and you'll always, whoever comes in, you'll always find something at a particular location. You don't have to find it, keys will always be at a particular location. It says keys in a, in a, in a, in a very big, big letters, keys are here. So when you put it back, you put it back there, someone coming, new knows where to get the keys from. And if you see, we're talking about creativity before capital, these, these bins, if you see, you know, we, a lot of companies use magnetic, you know, each magnetic tags and, you know, we can spend a lot of money. But in this case, these guys used, I think it's called painter's tape from Home Depot or something, put that in there, wrote what needs to be there, and it will always be there. And they labeled the, the bins as well, organized the bins, labeled them. And now suddenly their two-hour search time is reduced to less than half an hour, including the drive. Again, visual factory, I, I love the picture here. If you hit the sign, you'll hit the bridge. And, you know, visual factory, I, I have some simulations and all that stuff which, which are not here. But this, this makes a lot of sense, it, it includes signs, visuals, and audios. But using visual factory concepts in, in your office and in your workplace, you know, manufacturing service, office, anywhere, the training costs go down, you don't have to train as hard, people don't forget. And easier to work with, I know where I'm going, in which direction I'm headed, less chance of me making mistake and, and higher the quality. So the program details, we'll be working closely with the team at Carson. First, we'll be doing the high-level mapping to identify the opportunities. We'll be training, this will include the high-level maps and things like that. We'll be training the department leaders, the, the 12 leaders we talked about, or more, there may be more. Then we'll be prioritizing the effort impact chart, we'll be prioritizing the Kaizen events. And then we'll be running the Kaizen events. And the leaders will be shadowing me. And in some cases, you know, they'd be, I'll try and have them lead, lead the Kaizen events as well, so that, you know, when I'm gone, they can do these things on their own. Thank you.
Okay. City manager, how are you doing this afternoon?
Very good, sir.
All right. I have one question of you, is this something you want to do?
It is.
That's all you need to say.
Pardon?
I, I just wanted to hear that. You can explain if you wish, I didn't mean to shut you off. I just wanted to know. Okay. All right. Supervisor Bonkowski.
Well, I'll let you speak a little more. My first question, and I think this is for you, Rishi. At some point in Lean, do you stop trying to eliminate waste when you no longer see continuous improvement in the process?
No, we don't do that. And that is the philosophy behind, behind Lean. And for example, Toyota has been doing this for more than 40 years. And today, the waste they look at is very different. For example, you know, today they look at, when you're welding, you have this, these sparks coming out, it's slag or what, I, I don't know what that is called, and they say that is waste. Why am I wasting energy? So one, you're wasting energy, two, it's a fire hazard. And so for you and, for me to think, oh wow, you know, can that be waste? But, you know, they've been doing that for so long now that, I mean, they're at a much advanced level of trying to identify waste and eliminate that and to be even more effective. So Lean is, is a journey. And, you know, while we may say that Toyota is very efficient, for them, they're not, and they can still improve.
So if I hear you correctly, then, my assumption was that at some point, if you keep eliminating waste, that you enter into cutting corners. But what you're saying is that doesn't happen, what you do is, the process that you identify, identify waste by evolves and it becomes more complex and, and efficient?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, there are low-hanging fruits, I mean, you know, that is what we'll be targeting, I'm sure, you know, it, it's a cultural thing as well as, you know, but low-hanging fruits, you know, we get the biggest bang for the buck. And then, you know, we, we are training the, the people so that, you know, so they can, they too can continue on their own.
And you segued right into my second question. The initial step of the process is the low-hanging fruit at the Kaizen events because those are the easiest to identify and implement? And then after that, the step is that you make adjustments to those initial steps to either increase efficiency or redirect the process to increase efficiency?
If I understood the question correctly, yes. So, so the low-hanging fruit is where you get the biggest bang for your buck. And so, so let's say today is the end of a Kaizen event and Nick and I are a team and we have done that. We have definitely identified a more efficient way to do something to, to, to create this bottle. But is, you know, is there a better way, is this the best way? No. Is it, will there be, it's, it's the best way today. Is, will there be a better way six months down the line? Absolutely. You know, there may be some better plastic, you know, these caps, you know, we don't have to rotate them, it's, it's quick, you know, just press it, you don't get leaks. You know, the labeling may be a lot better, I, you know, so it's, it's continuous today. Now, this is maybe loose, it makes a noise, I don't like. Can we make that better? We absolutely can. But today, it is, we're spending a lot of time opening and closing the bottles, which would be a low-hanging fruit. But, you know, six months down the line, can we make this better? And, you know, this noise could be here, that's irritating to me, can we make that better? As a customer, if I, if I'm the customer and say, you know, I don't like this noise or, you know, I can't read properly, too small, you know, it, the, the level changes, but it, it keeps continuing to improve.
If we train all of our department heads, when it comes to sustainability of the program, how do we provide for successors? So if a department head leaves, what, what is in place in this process to train the successors so that you have continuity and, wow, it must be getting late, sustainability in the program?
And so, so I will go to this slide. And this, this was next focus, I think, and that is what we have discussed. And that is why, so in, in phase one, we will see an ROI and a return on investment. And then after that, you know, his focus is the green belt training so that the people know the advanced tools and they themselves become trainers for other people in the, in the, in their departments. So that is the, develop the Carson City Green Belt Certification Program and train the department leaders to achieve that certification. Once that is done, they will be capable of, and this will be very intense, it's not a two-day training session. In this case, they, it'll be very in-depth where they will be creating the PowerPoints, they will be researching so that, I mean, I can, you know, say that, okay, do this, do that, but once, you know, they are at that level, then they can teach others and, you know, sustain this.
Thank you. Nick, my next question is for you. I'm looking at the audience out here, I assume that we're possibly looking at our first class.
Well, to a certain extent, a few of them are. In most cases, the guidance that I had given the department directors and the elected officials was, I was looking for a middle-level manager who was going to be around for a while. In some cases, depending on the department organization, the, the department director is in fact going to be the person receiving the Lean training. In most cases, it's more of a mid-level management. Kurt Meyer from Parks and Rec, you know, Angela Baroso from Health and Human Services and so on. So it's not just the department director, but I'm really looking for someone who's going to be around for a while, ideally someone who can move up in the organization and keep those, keep that culture of continuous process improvement. Because that's one of the key objectives I'm, I'm after is to create a different culture, a culture of process improvement. And they're the people that'll lead it, the people that'll be, be around for, for a while.
And then my last question is, why Moss Adams and why not an RFP?
Well, we already had a good relationship with Moss Adams. They knew in depth a great deal of our processes already. Everything from the fleet study to the risk assessment that they had done, I think, in 2012. So there was a lot of corporate knowledge that Moss Adams brings to the table in terms of processes. And I, I thought it was good to, to build on that with them. It, it provides, I think, that, it provides us with a partner who knows us very well and who knows our, who knows our strengths and our weaknesses, too.
So it's your belief that that translates into efficiency in the training as well as cost savings?
I think it's going to give us a greater ROI in the end. Because they already, they're not, Moss Adams won't be starting from a cold start, so to speak, like, okay, who's Carson City? Where are you, oh, you guys own your own vehicles, you do your own fleet maintenance? No, they've already done, actually, a very detailed fleet maintenance study. And that's one of the, that's, you know, one of the examples I had given to Rishi that I thought would be a good place to start. So they're not coming in from a cold start. They know us well, and I think we'll get a better end result because of that, a higher ROI.
Brad asked a lot of my questions, but I wanted to drill down further on one of them. We have some examples that were given of areas that are going to possibly be looked at. Is this going to go across all departments or just selected?
It is. In fact, you know, the sheriff is here, there's a number we could, I could think off the top of my head of processes that the sheriff would probably want to have looked at. And I think Kathy is in fact his nominee to receive the training. So it's going to go across every city department. I've invited all the elected officials to participate in it as well. We'll have a total of 15 that will receive the training and will be able to step through Kaizen events with all of them.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Yes, ma'am.
Nick, on the elected officials who are going to participate, will they be contributing any funding?
No, the, the proposal that I'm, the, on, on funding, to answer your question, supervisor, the, the proposal I'm bringing today would be to augment the city manager budget from contingency. We currently have just over $500,000 available in contingency. This would represent about, this would represent $50,000 to do it. I wasn't going to then try and track back, you know, to the sheriff or to the assessor or to the courts, they're also going to participate. And I, and I think the, are, each one of these Kaizen events will have an ROI associated with it. Rishi said kind of on the low end is 10%. We'll see, I think, probably closer to 30% in most cases in terms of return on investment when we go through the Kaizen event.
And has this type training ever been done at another city-run government as it, you're going to do here?
Actually, Colorado is doing this in a big way. Washington is doing it in a big way. California, a lot of departments have, a lot of cities have, have adopted this. These are examples, I know. There are many more states and departments that have, that have adopted Lean.
How long does a training usually take?
So in, in this case, we are training them for the Kaizen events. And this is a hands-on training, they will be, the people will be shadowing me. A Kaizen event is typical three days to five days, depending on the process. I think that, that was your question.
So the total training package is how many days from beginning until you're all done with this whole thing? Is it, what's the timeframe?
I, I think within three or four months, of course, not every, we, we, within three or four, I'm targeting, you know, this, we, we will end in, in May or June.
You know, and, and some of the challenges that are listed, I mean, the payroll process, I, I just don't know if we need to pay for this to tell us to upgrade that when it's something we should be doing. I think these, these things on this page, I'm just, I, I don't know if we need to pay $50,000 to tell us we need to upgrade our payroll system or, or accounts payable or our contractors manual. I mean, I don't see why we have to pay $50,000 to have someone tell us to do this when we should be doing it anyway. It's just my opinion, so.
So, so we're talking, we're not talking about the system, we're talking about the process. And so, and it's not to, to tell Nick that, hey, you know, your fleet maintenance is, is at 240. It's to, it's to tell him it is at 240, now it's at $200 an hour.
Is there any expect, is there any expectation of what the savings will be after we've run this program to the city, dollar-wise, or is this just manpower, or is this, we're more efficient? There's no cost savings expectation? I'm just asking.
It depends on the process. It completely depends on the process. So for example, you know, if it is some service in an office environment with many windows, and, you know, the budget may be to hire 10 more people in that department this year, and that may not need to happen, because we have been more efficient and we don't need more people. That's one of the ways. In the fleet maintenance, you know, if they are spending, you know, in that example which I shared, you know, if they're spending two hours looking for something, and have a huge backlog of activities, you will see the backlog completely down, well, you know, of course, over time, it won't happen overnight, but you will see if, you know, they're taking, if you're doing 10 repairs a day, you'll start seeing, you know, 15 repairs a day. And I'm just throwing these numbers out.
The difference between this and the efficiency study that we paid Moss Adams to do, what is the difference between these two? And I mean, is one better than the other?
I will speak to this, but this is a very hands-on approach. For example, we will be in jeans and t-shirts, and, you know, we will be working with the team to take care of the process there and then. And I think the other report which you mentioned, I think, was a fact-finding mission, is that correct?
Pretty good summation. Is there any expectation of when the efficiency study, I know you're reporting on a quarterly basis, but when that will be finalized, and we're done with that, and we've got everything accomplished in that study that Moss Adams asked us to do? Is there any expectation of when that will be done?
Yeah, it's a completely different issue, and I, if you remember, when you accepted the efficiency study, you directed me to come back quarterly and give you an update on the status of it. We've already hit a lot of the low-hanging fruit. So, and we'll continue to provide those updates. That's completely different from a lean management process.
Yes, I know that.
Oh.
I understand that. But we haven't finished something we've already paid for, and we're going to take on another task and start something else. So all I was trying to accomplish is asking, when will that be done? So we know when we're taking this on, when will this be done? I mean, we keep adding new programs, but we're never finishing anything. I mean, if we're going to report quarterly, that could be, you know, years from now, so...
Yeah, and I think that's a good question, because respectfully, this will never be done. This is a, this is a, I mean, this is, you know, the essence of continuous process improvement. It'll never, I mean, you're not, you don't want it to be done.
No, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I understand this goes on and on, the lean, but the efficiency study has to finally end, and that's what I was leading to. I'm okay with everything right now. What I would like to see is, on January, or February 5th, we're having the, a meeting with all department heads?
Strategic planning retreat.
Correct.
Yes.
This is where I'd like this to be discussed with department heads, and have their feedback before we spend $50,000. I'd like to have them in a room, and have them look at this, and tell us, hey, this is a great idea, it would really help my department, we could do this, we could do that. I think we should wait till February 5th. I'm sorry. Somebody's phone.
Yeah.
I just think we should wait till February 5th, until we discuss this with department heads, and get their feedback, if, and where this will take us, where this will lead us, and is it something we're spending $50,000 on? That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Lori, go.
So, the question for me is, I'm trying to break down the, I'm sorry. Thank you. The question for me goes, so 15 people for training is your anticipation? So we're going to spend about, I don't know, 3,500, 3,200 per employee for the training? Is that consistent? Because you did not go out for an RFP. Is that a consistent price in the marketplace for this event and training? Is that relatively consistent?
It is. I think when you look at having the Kaizen events that will be led and facilitated, I do think, I mean, if you look at just, you know, if you want to get green belt training, for example, there are a number of universities and places you could do that. I had initially brought it up to WNC, they don't have a program, but they could have put something together for me, and it would have been, you know, just under that amount of money, just to get training. I think this is greater value to us, because we're also having facilitated Kaizen events that are based on specific Carson City processes. These may or may not be what makes the cut, this is just something that you could visualize in terms of how involved some of these processes are, where the pain points exist, and how we could improve them. So I think when you look at the value of having the Kaizen events that'll be led, so it won't just be a classroom exercise. We're going to use our own processes, and we're going to improve them. So at the end of it, well, it's not just that we spent $50,000, but by improving our payroll process, there's going to be a big ROI. That process touches every department, it involves multiple steps, it's all manual. You all know, you get paper copies of your pay stubs, you're about to get a paper copy of your W-2 form, there's a lot of labor that goes into producing all that. So that process, for example, if that's one that we look at, is going to have an ROI. There's a benefit to, the city will accrue a benefit by stepping through that, as opposed to just sending one, someone to get training.
So could we structure this contract to whatever the initial amount that's needed for your baseline training, and then one Kaizen event, and then you could report to us a return on that, so that the comfort zone, instead of just awarding you a blanket $50,000, could we structure the beginning training and the, one Kaizen event, for example, payroll, doesn't matter which one, and then you would report the success, and that the comfort zone for all of us is, and your management team, that it's being embraced? Because I do think if the employees don't embrace the process, it won't be as successful. And report back to us, and then we could authorize three more, or four more, or five more, however many are appropriate? And your future, because I think there might be future costs and more implementation if this is successful. Is that right? There'd be other costs that you anticipate for another round?
Well, I don't know if we're going to have additional costs in terms of our, yeah, in terms of our consultant here. I think, I'm confident we get through this round of training, and we do the Kaizen events, we'll internalize the process at that point. So I mean, that would be an additional decision, but I don't, what my intent is, is to not have to go to that step, is to internalize the process and be able to repeat it.
Nick, what strikes me, or I'd like to refresh my memory, but I think when you were hired, this was one of your to-do things, correct?
It was, and in fact, even though it's not a city, the federal government has embraced lean management, particularly Department of Defense. Very common to go through all the processes that are involved in, at least at the federal level. So it's common in government, I think it's starting to get more prevalent at the state and local level.
Right. Nick, assuming that we approve this item today, how are you envisioning that you would report back to the board on the process and the success?
Well, I think the structure of the Kaizen event, first of all, we'll have the nominees go through, or the, yeah, the department nominees go through the training, and then I think the structure of the Kaizen events has a built-in report mechanism to the board, because each one of those will have an ROI. As you look at, well, okay, you can have that up, but as you look at the examples that we had up a moment ago there, we can report back on the status of it. This will be probably, what do you think, four or five months, Rishi, by June? We should be complete with the Kaizen events? Something like that?
Yes, we will be.
So this isn't going to be a long-term process. That would be, that was my intent, to be able to report back to the board on each one of the Kaizen events. If you find that acceptable, if not, we could come up with a different metric, but that'll be...
That was, that was the answer I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay. Any members of the public, department heads, anybody want to weigh in? Silence is acquiescence. See that? They're all approved this. The sheriff's got it. Oh, hi.
Wake up, kid. They always catch me when I'm on this.
It's all right. Anybody? Anybody want to weigh in? All right, then why don't we try this? We'll try a motion to do what the thing says, see if that goes, and we'll discuss that and go from there. Somebody want to make a motion? Supervisor, about?
I move to accept the lean management training and green belt certification program for staff, as presented by Moss Adams, option two, and approve funding in the amount of $50,000 for fiscal year 1415, to be funded from contingency, or as in an alternative various accounts as determined by the board.
Second for discussion.
Discussions in order.
Could you modify that to just end it at, to be funded from contingency? Since we're not giving them alternative various accounts?
Yes, I can. I so amended.
Yeah, okay. There's a second amendment, takes a minute.
Second amendment.
All right, just further discussion on there. Go, Jim.
I can see both the positive, I see the positive side of this, what it can accomplish. I'm just a little, a little hesitant to vote yea on this, because I've seen other things come through, such as the fleet study, such as the efficiency study. I don't feel, as a board member, I've gotten the full impact of what we paid for to begin with. I haven't seen the return come back. I mean, we're citing, the fleet maintenance is not operating efficiency, efficiently, but we did a study on this, and we're still complaining about it. And now we're going to do another lean to make that, and we have the efficiency study out there. Again, I think, I'd like to see this discussed at our strategic planning session on February 5th. I'd like to hear from department heads how they're going to implement this, and how we can approach this. I mean, if we're looking at this to help us correct our payroll, I think that's something we should do anyway. I don't think we need to pay someone to tell us, hey, improve this. That's just my opinion. I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything, I'm just voicing my opinion, why I will not vote in favor of this, that's all.
Yeah, I guess, you know, where I come from, this is a frame of, this is a management tool that creates a frame of mind, and I kind of, you know, when I facetiously said it, silence is acquiescence, in one sense, I meant that, but I really do think, from my own standpoint, is, is we hire our city manager to make these decisions, and, I mean, I don't think he should be subject to his department heads telling him, well, we don't want to do this, because I think it takes away from him. That's why I asked him at the beginning, you up to doing this or not? And I'm not ragging on anybody here, I just, but I think that what's being done here is that, at least from my perspective, is it's a way of thinking about work, and trying to do things in a manner that produces a result that we can be proud of, and on various methods. And I, too, you know, have concerns about what the Kaizen study could do, I mean, what they are, but, you know, for me, I'm willing to take the risk that, you know, this is something the city manager thinks is important from his management of the city, and if it improves our delivery of services, I'm all for it. For me, the efficiency study was one to determine, and I think you probably said it right, is it was a factual finding on whether we're loaded up too much, not loaded up, or whatever in terms of personnel. And we also have the PONFEX study that's out there in terms of pay, and I think we've got those two things moving down the road. And we've also done, you know, the internal audit studies that you mentioned, Jim, we've done those, that are in the process of being worked through. And some, I think, have been actually completed. Matter of fact, I can't think of any that, well, I think most of those have been completed on the internal audit. But, so for me, you know, one, I kind of, if the city manager tells me from a management standpoint, this is something he believes sincerely, that is important for the delivery of adequate service to our patrons, and that's our taxpayers, our citizens, that's a big step for me. The second is if it generates a culture of efficiency, and, for lack of a better word, lean management, I think there's a value in that. And I don't think that we ought to have a vote about, I don't think, for me, I don't think it's, we ought to have, the department has to weigh in and vote on it, I think this is something the city manager has to make up his own mind on and go from there. He's the leader of the city, he's the CEO of the city, so that's where I come from. And I, it's just my own two cents on a discussion, so I don't know who's next. Jim, you want to go, and then we'll just go like this.
No. Mayor, you bring up some great points, and I agree to that effect, I just see things sometimes a little bit different, and I think I'm entitled to do that. I think, you know, as a CEO of the city, the city manager, to put this into effect because he believes it's going to save us money or do better, okay, I get it, I understand it. But I also look at things a little bit differently, and I would first go to my department heads and say, hey, how can you make your department lean? How can you improve this department before I spend $50,000? Give me your list of ideas of how we can change things. What can you do for me so I can do for the city, and so the citizens will benefit from this? I see the process, I just want the other processes that we've already paid for to benefit us before I spend any more money going down the road. That's just my viewpoint.
Well, and that's what discussion's all about, Jim. I think that, you know, it's not, I'm not trying to, as I said, I'm not trying to, in one sense, I'm trying to convince you with my arguments. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I'll go, I'll keep talking then. No, I'm just kidding you. All right, I think we're down here, Supervisor, about, what did I say? Want to go, Karen, then Lori, sorry.
I would agree with you, Bob, that, first of all, I think this empowers the city manager to do what he's wanted to do since he was hired. Secondly, we have talented staff, and what this allows them to do, it elevates their mindset. Sometimes you can't see the forest for the trees, because you've been so used to doing things the same way for so long, you need somebody else to say, okay, this is how we need to do this. It gives you a different way of looking at things, so you can actually accomplish what's on the list of the to-dos. So to my way of thinking, this is what we need to do.
Okay. So I'm going to support this, because I think that we hired you as our city manager to lead us, and we should start with the faith in that. This will be your true test in reality. And I just ask that when you do the actual contract, that you consider a structured payment methodology, so that if you're unhappy with the service, you don't continue to spend the money. So I just ask that when you put your contract together, think of, just structure it that way. Thank you.
Okay. We've talked and discussed. Anybody want to discuss further? Okay. Then we'll take, on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. Good debate, folks, at the board level here. Okay. All right. And I say that sincerely, because we've been at this now for six, almost 10 hours, or nine hours, anyway. Getting warmed up, and we're going to come back in 45 minutes, so I want everybody to go take a break, get a little bite to eat, don't have a donut. I've got to go. What else have I got here? Non-action items? We got any of that?
Thank you.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Go, go.
So I was wondering, I, I know that the mayor has asked you to look at the processes for Reno so that we can fill our treasurer position. Do you have a status of when that will be happening?
Yes, ma'am. I intend to bring for the February 5th meeting, we literally just got the official resignation. What Reno did, what the mayor asked me to look at, was the process, how they filled Hillary Sheen's position on the city council. What I will recommend on February 5th will be a similar process. It will be, we will, I would recommend we open the position for a period of 30 days. All the candidates who meet the qualifications, I will provide those names to the board members. I will ask that you then look at however many there are, 10, 20, 30, 40, whatever the final number is, and then give me your top five. The HR director will, will take those nominees, and then at the next open board meeting, they will be, you will debate those, and I would recommend you come up with a list of finalists that will actually have an interview, another public meeting, whatever the number of finalists is, three, five, seven, that's your decision. Then those five finalists, or whatever the number is, come to another open meeting, you'll interview them, debate, and then make a decision, or not make a decision, on hiring a new treasurer at that point. So I would anticipate the process taking probably less than 90 days. So I, I would think our interim treasurer will probably, she'll probably be in place, I would think, until, you know, maybe the 1st of May. We could possibly do it sooner, but I would think that's probably a fair timeframe. Could be sooner, could be April, but that would be, that's going to be my recommendation to you.
Just a couple of things. I have not heard anything back on the animal shelter oversight committee. I don't know if that's forthcoming or not. I just want to bring a couple of things up about the municipal golf course, and I'm not trying to labor on this, but, you know, the city made roughly $106,000 from the lease agreement, but the director actually makes more than we do. And, and the reason I bring that up is that when, when fees are coming up for the golf, I think the city should have an input on what, what they charge for fees. I think we should have some input on what those fees are, because it dictates how much we receive and the end result as well. We also talked about the affluent water, and I, hopefully that'll be coming back to the board shortly. Not just when we talked to Eagle Valley, we talked about it, but it'll be coming back in general. As many, I think some of the board members had met privately with Mary Walker, I did. I'm not, let me see if I put, I'm not real pleased with where we're at with Mary Walker. She's not going to come before the board or the public, before the session, during the session, or possibly after the session she will be coming. And basically, what we're faced with is, as I told her, last time she was in session, we got so many emails about so many bills, I couldn't decipher it, maybe other board members could, what was important, what wasn't important. It was forwarded to the city manager, the city manager at that time just forwarded everything forward. And what I talked to her, and it's in the resolution that we just passed, that in section three, it says, through a standard, a standing agenda item at regular scheduled board meetings that occurred during the 2015 session, we will have an agenda item that will address, I think, bills that are coming forward. And what I asked her to do, if she could, is the bills that are coming forward that will actually have an impact on Carson City, if she could flag those and, and let us know what that is, and she said she can't. So at some point, we have to figure out at, where all these bills are, we just can't be forwarding all this information with no, you know, idea of what, what that is. And so that's all I'm asking.
I understand completely. I'll, I'll address your, the last point first. If you look at the number of bills that require a policy decision from the board, anywhere from approximately 10% of the total number of bills. I don't know how the previous city manager did it. My intention is to prevent just spamming you with every bill that, you know, not, again, if 10% is a valid number based on past sessions, you don't need the other 90%. So I, I, I view part of my job is to filter that and to provide the 10% that are actually going to require to be agendized, debated, and voted on by the board. So I'm not wasting your time causing you to read through a document that really isn't going to require any type of a policy decision. So I, again, I don't know how he did it, but I, I plan to not, you know, overdo the, you know, the, the inbox for it. For the citizens committee, for the animal services, we've re-engaged again with the Humane Society. The limiting factor has been that Senator Ben Kikeffer is the chair of that. He has expressed again as recently as yesterday to the director or the CEO of the Humane Society that he wants to retain that position. He has assured us that the notices will go out, and they will have before the end of the month, before the end of this month, in January 2015, that we'll have the first meeting. So, and I think it just kind of reflects where he's been lately in terms of workload. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
That, kind of follow-up to the resolution that was just passed, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The resolution that was just passed, I know there was, it was, as the mayor said, it was great debate on that resolution. I, I'm still a little hesitant of understanding, and maybe, maybe not at this time, but maybe later, the district attorney could give me a legal opinion. Does this resolution stop an individual board member now serving, elected official now serving, going to the session and testifying as a board member, actually saying, when he sat down and he's, before the chairperson, he says, I'm Jim Shirk, not that I would, board supervisor, Ward 4, and I'm here to talk about whatever. If, if, you don't have to at this point, but if you could give a legal opinion, can't, by this resolution, does that stop an individual, elected official, from going to the legislature and testifying as a board member? And I'm not calling you to the mat at the moment.